Well, the time being 6:30. And according to the Charter, we'll open up a public hearing on the Town of Southbridge fiscal year 2015 budget, which I understand has been advertised in the newspaper. Notice is given to the public hearing in the council chambers at the town hall Monday, May 19, 2014, at 6:30 PM. Public hearing on the fiscal year 2015 town budget. And it lists the budget items, general government, the recommendation from the town manager. Is he here? Is everyone here? Oh, I'll start. Yeah, well, just want to take care of the mic, please. Yeah. Is that any better?
It's working.
Thank you. I said it's working on television. On TV, but, yeah. Is it bad drafting work? Is that any better?
Yes.
Thanks, sorry about that. Okay. I was beginning to read the notice of the hearing, which has been advertised in the newspaper, according to the Charter. Town of Southbridge Council Chambers, public hearing, Monday, May 19, 2014, 6:30 PM. And it lists the budget items. General Government, $12,091,520. Public Safety, $6,8,193. Public Works, $1,885,150. Human Services, $1,551,365. Bay Path Regional -- Bay Path Schools, $1,042,656. School Department, $25,123,485. Sewer Enterprise Fund, $3,762,785. And Water Enterprise Fund, $3,705,027. For a total of $55,170,181. I would just comment before we start, and these are the recommendations from the town manager, as well as consulting with departments and the finance director, treasurer, assessors. I know there's been some concern about the sewer rates in particular in water. People may know that there is a public hearing on that this Thursday. Whether people who want to appreciate it or not, I consider this a very lean budget. There are very few increases, particularly in personnel. Many of the budgets at subcommittee meetings were gone through rather quickly because there, frankly, wasn't much to go through. There was, you know, an equitable increase in personnel and virtually no increase in expenses in many of these budgets. I think that clearly the primary reason for the increase in the budget and in the tax rate will be the traditional problem that communities have, which is state aid. And with the state, and was mentioned in the presentation that I had given earlier, the town went from what you might say net state aid, meaning your receipts minus charges, because you also get the charges, of about $928,000. That was net in fiscal this year, down to roughly $286,000 net increase in state aid for fiscal -- oh, that sounds better, for fiscal '15. So I think that the increase that you're seeing in taxes, which I would add, obviously is still well under the -- not well under, but under the two-and-a-half limit town is using up its excess capacity, is due to the decrease in state aid. So with that... Go to the public floor? Yeah. I'll open it up for comments. Any comments from the public on the budget? Questions?
My name is Kenneth O'Brien. I reside at 858 North Woodstock Road. You'll forgive me, I'd like a little clarification, partly because we couldn't hear most of what Mr. Reed was saying until the mics came on. As I understand it, you originally proposed a budget on March 24 of $49,609,780. The budget that is being voted tonight is for $47,702,369. That is a difference in excess of $1.9 million. What explains that discrepancy first?
Right now, sir, I couldn't answer the question. There really isn't a change in my recommendations between that budget presentation and now. I guess we would have to look at where -- what numbers you're looking at, but there really hasn't been any change in the recommendation. The only -- I might say, the only recommendation -- the only change has been in the school department budget, I should say.
Right.
There has been, I believe, an agreement, and this happened just before I went on vacation, I met with the school superintendent and talked to him about a way to piece together some revenue sources to increase the school budget, which was a combination of school choice receiving tuition, some additional state aid that's in both the House and Senate supplemental budgets to the governor's number, which is about roughly $84,000. Although, honestly, we don't expect to see that until after the beginning of the fiscal year, but I believe that's an adjustment the council would be able to make. And then also including the school department in the capital plan and being able to address some of their capital needs, which certainly was a concern of the superintendent's in his presentation as well. So between -- and that would be about, I believe, $150,000. So with those items, we were able to bring up the school budget. I don't know whether those equal out to the differential you're talking about.
No, I'm talking the difference of 1.9 million.
Yeah, 1.9 million?
Yeah. That's going by the funding document contained in tonight's agenda for a fiscal year general fund budget of $47,702,369. The original budget you proposed was for $49,609,780.
Correct.
What's the discrepancy?
We're working on that as we speak.
Because that, I think, has a phenomenally large bearing on the tax rate. In fact, if that's a reduction of 1.9 million, that would lead to not an increase in the tax rate, but a reduction in the tax rate in excess of 6 percent.
Counsel, I can...
Okay, if that's all right. I believe he's referring to page three under the first section where there's general fund totals of your $47 million, but then there's the other non-voting items, which add up to a grand total of $49,609. I believe that's what you're talking about, Mr. O'Brien.
So the balanced budget we were presented incorporated things like sewer fund, water fund, is that what we're talking about? Well, what are the items?
The other nonsets, say cherry sheet, the cherry sheet, the snow and ice deficit, state and county charges, school choice, charter school, other allowance for abatements, that all then goes to that $49,609. So I think he's looking at what the -- how, if you could explain the difference between $47 million and those items that are considered non-voting items, maybe you could explain it to the people. Do you understand?
Yeah.
If you want me to, you want these cherry sheet offsets, projected starlight, state and county charges.
Are those on the agenda, separate items?
Three items right here don't have to be voted, the non-voting items, but they are part of the budget.
Yes, I see it.
Well, the -- I'm looking at what I understand is your number, $49,609. There are some additional items here that are non-voting items that are included that wouldn't be in the operating budget. For example, cherry sheet offsets, they're called offset items because they go directly to a particular budget, like the schools or to the library. There was another one, the -- some state and county charges that are included. And those are all things that have to be accounted for on the expense side that would make up the total budget. But as far as the recommendations for individual budgets, that hasn't changed. And these are things that would be, that weren't -- I think the idea of the budget presentation was for particular town departments and to make recommendations on particular town departments, because these other items are what they are. It's not as if the council can change offsets or change what's on the cherry sheet. So I think the purpose of the presentation that I made was for departmental budgets that the council would have some discretion on, and to get to the $49 million includes some other items that would not be, whether it was a town council or selectmen or what have you, be under their jurisdiction. They're just expenses that go into the budget that the town has.
Well, I guess it's confusing, because in prior years, the presentation we had of the budget document or proposal squared up with the final voting document.
Well, I'm not sure how the lower number got out there, but I believe that those items, what we knew about those items at the time in the presentation...
Well, the lower item, the lower number's on tonight's agenda.
Yeah.
Which is what it stated to be the general fund budget. The question then becomes, why were we quoted a budget of $49 million to begin with when the general fund budget was $47 million? And in all past presentations, at least during the tenure of former town manager Mr. Clark, there was a correspondence between the budget presentation and that number and what was ultimately voted by the council. And I'm speaking as a former counselor who was involved in that process.
Yes. Uh-huh.
If I can maybe help to explain, so the $49 million is the -- $49,609,780 is the actual general fund total budget. Out of that, the items that need to be voted on this evening are the $47,702,369. The other items, like were explained, they come on the -- from the state and the cherry sheet.
Right, I understand what you're telling me, those are nondiscretionary items.
Right, so the total budget is actually the $49 million.
I'm just, you know, confused, I guess, by the discrepancy between past practice and what was done this year.
That's always the way that we've done it.
I'm sorry?
That's always the way that it's been done.
It is always the way it's been done.
Yes, yes, it's consistent.
Okay, because, I mean, the documents I have, the document of the prior year's budget presentation showed a high degree of correlation with maybe a few adjustments here and there between what Mr. Clark presented in his original budget message and the final voting document.
Yeah, well, I don't know if it made it to the PowerPoint that was part of the presentation, but the $49,609, and this is the budget presentation that was made in March, does include these items and doesn't include a budget of $49,609.
Unfortunately, that presentation is very hard to view on the videotape.
Right, yeah.
So, and it's not, at least I haven't been able to find it on the town website.
Yeah, oh, okay. Check that.
So, you know, in a sense, one is trying to draw these conclusions somewhat in the dark.
Right, well, I -- obviously, a couple of numbers got out there, but the $49,609 was part of the budget presentation, at least it was given to the council in March.
So we are dealing with a total budget tonight of $49,609, as distinct from the $47 that is being voted on. The other items are being voted separately. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Sorry, thank you for that clarification.
Sorry, I just ask, I just want to, I don't know if it'll help or not, the 2.77, the overall increase to the budget, the 2.77 percent, that is the number, that is the percentage, because he commented about the tax rate, and if we weren't accurate, then would our tax rate, would that make a difference down the road? I mean, but we have been working with a 2.77, and that is what we will be raising and making sure our tax dollars will be paying for is the 2.77 increase. Does that make -- I don't know if I said that correctly, but, you know, we're working within...
Yeah, those numbers, to this point, those numbers have not changed.
Right, so that's our anticipation on the taxes and the increase were based on what we've, what you put forth as the 49.
Yes, yeah.
Okay, all right, I don't know if that's helpful. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Arnold Wani, 11 Blanchard Drive, Southbridge. I just have a few comments. The population of Southbridge is aging, and the projections are that it will continue to age. New people are not coming into the town, the youth are not staying here. Home values are among the lowest, the mid -- home values are among the lowest in the state. We need to do something about, and our schools are rated among the lowest in the state. We need to do something about increasing the value of homes as well as increasing the value of our schools. They go hand in hand. As the statistics across the state will point out, if you would like to, if you would like me sometime to share those with you. The homes in Southbridge are on the market for a year, for months. Homes in Charlton and surrounding towns are on the market for four or five days. People are not buying. However, we have a buyer's market. Our median value is $153,000, that very low. How do we get people to buy, to move, to come to Southbridge? Well, they're not coming for one reason, there aren't any jobs here. If there were jobs, they'd be seeking them, and our homes would be selling, and our rentals would be going up, which would also solve another problem, the problem we have with absentee landlords. You fix up your property to make it saleable or rentable, and you increase the value. How do we go about doing this? We need to create jobs in the community. We have an industrial park that's been available for many years. I do not see anything happening there. I could be wrong, I just don't see anything happening. The industrial park needs to be promoted, it needs to be sold, it needs to be marketed. That is not a part-time job, that is a full-time endeavor. You have to go out and really search and work hard at attracting industries to come into this community. Hiring a full-time management firm would help answer that question. Yes, I know budgets are tight, but all kinds of concessions can be made through negotiations. You could negotiate to have bonuses or receipts based on what you sell or what you develop. You could be on commission, but you have to get the word out that there is good viable space available. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Just ask if there's anyone else. Just me? Who did the council? Of course, yeah. This is the... Okay. Anyone else from the public who'd like to ask any questions or make any comments on the budget? Okay, well...
Three times.
Ask three times.
Yep.
Okay. Is there anyone else who would like to ask any questions or make any comments on the budget? Anyone else who would like to make any comments or ask any questions on the budget? All right, well, seeing none, we will close the hearing. The time I have is 6:50. Thank you all very much. Thank you for coming.
Proceed on to our regular town council meeting, May 19, 2014, at 6:50. Please join us in the pledge allegiance to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Agenda item number three, considering accepted, town council meeting minutes of Monday, May 5, 2014. Drive a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion, corrections?
I'm abstaining, I wasn't here.
Anyone? Seeing not a show of hands will be sufficient. And you got the one exception. Thank you. Agenda item number four, subcommittee reports, general government, council, and Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A meeting of the general government subcommittee was held on Wednesday, May 14, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, committee members, councilors Vandal and councillor Moriarty. Also in attendance were councillor Clements, councillor Manor, Karen Harnoy, Roger and Estelle Cowett, and Martina Shea. Holly Cristo was excused, Michael James was absent. I called the meeting to order at 6:40 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to change the name of the Veterans Conference Room to the Laurent Larry E. McDonald Conference Room and to submit to council for ratification. I stated that I was in favor of this because Larry McDonald did a lot for this community and was also a veteran. Councillor Manor disagreed because they are taking the room away from veterans. I stated that I believe the intention was to add Laurent Larry E. McDonald, but leave Veterans Room in the name. Councillor Vandal and councillor Clements said that as long as the veterans were added to the conference room name, they would not have a problem. A motion was made by councillor Vandal and seconded by councillor Moriarty to amend the agenda item to read, quote, "Vote to change the name of the Veterans Conference Room to the Laurent Larry E. McDonald Veterans Conference Room and to submit to council for ratification." Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. A motion was made by councillor Vandal, seconded by councillor Moriarty with a favorable recommendation to council to vote to change the name of the Veterans Conference Room to the Laurent Larry E. McDonald Veterans Conference Room and to submit to council for ratification. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. A motion was made by councillor Vandal, seconded by councillor Moriarty with a favorable recommendation to council to vote to change the name of the Veterans Conference Room to the Laurent Larry E. McDonald Veterans Conference Room. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, three to nothing. Motion made to adjourn by councillor Vandal and seconded by councillor Moriarty. The meeting adjourned at 6:53 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. At this time, I have no other meetings scheduled, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor. B, PPW, councillor Vandal.
No report and no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor, could you please schedule a meeting on a couple of things? One, I would like an update, we did talk about this a while ago. I want to have a meeting on our snow policy, removal, plowing, an updated version of it, so we can have, I know we're in spring, but before you know it, snow starts flying again. And also, I know you talked about removal of the railroad tracks.
I'm going to say it again tonight.
So if we could put those two things on the agenda and have a meeting and discussion, and maybe come aboard a timeframe on some of those things would be great. We appreciate it.
I will do that, thank you.
Thank you. C, Education and Human Services, councillor Macucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We held a meeting on Wednesday, May 14, in the Rice Conference Room. In attendance were myself, councillor Clements, councillor Manor, citizen member Martina Shea, and Leanne Pate. Also in attendance were councillor Vandal, councillor Moriarty, councillor Carrasco, Karen Harnoy, Buzz Nimbercar, Karen Sheridan, Erin Quinney, Cara Donovan, Jill Congdon, Lauren McLaughlin, Brent Abrahamson, Gusteas, Roger and Estelle Cowett, Chelsea Davis, and Margaret Morrissey. Called the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. Agenda item number one, vote to appoint James Dyer of Southbridge to the Library Board of Trustees for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2015, due to a member resignation and to submit to council for ratification. No discussion was held. A motion was made by councillor Clements, seconded by councillor Manor with a favorable recommendation to council to appoint James Dyer to the Library Board of Trustees for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2015. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, four zero. Agenda item number two, vote to transfer $3,500 from the Town Council Reserve Account 11325781 to Veterans Benefit Account 194557710596 to pay benefits for the month of June and to submit to council for ratification. Councillor Macucci said this is just to pay the bill, it is being done on a monthly basis until the new fiscal year. A motion was made by councillor Clements, seconded by councillor Manor to transfer $3,500 from Town Council Reserve Account 11325781 to Veterans Benefit Account 194557710596 to pay the benefits for the month of June. All in favor, four zero. Agenda item number three, discuss the FY 2015 school budget line item. Karen Harnoy said she wanted to clarify that on May 19, the budget will reflect the increase of 2% for $25,123,485 to the school budget. However, the town intends to allocate additional funds to the school as follows. $150,000 will be appropriated in capital, $28,000 to replace three elementary school servers plus memory upgrades to all elementary PCs to Windows 7 compliance, $71,000 for copy machine leases district-wide, and $51,000 for the purchase of two sped vans, $31,000 in school choice receiving tuition, $84,000 if the state approves the un, excuse me, approves for unrestricted general government aid. The school will be allocated an additional $265,000 for its use in FY 2015, which results in an overall increase of 3.08% from FY 2014. Mr. Nimbercar said that he is satisfied with this amount. Questions were asked about the copier machines being listed as a capital expenditure. Ms. Sheridan and Mr. Nimbercar said it is here because it is more cost-effective to lease copiers rather than buy them. They're looking to consolidate all of the current leases into one. Councillor Manor said there is a discrepancy of $7,000 from the original budget to final budget for the copiers. Ms. Sheridan explained that in reviewing the budget and leases, they discovered that some of the she, I'm sorry, some of the machines will need to be brought out as the leases will be consolidated. She's having an analysis done of all the machines. Councillor Macucci said there were concerns raised on certain line items. Mr. Nimbercar interrupted and stated that, with all due respect, the law and regulations say they allotted a budget and have a finance team that go through all line items and give the bottom figure to the town for voting. He will be glad to come to the council floor and answer and explain any questions anyone has, but does not feel he has to explain his budget by line item. Erin Quinney called for a point of order. Councillor Macucci said she overrules her point of order and that, with all due respect, the school budget is part of the overall town budget, and they have been, and we have been sold a bill of goods in the past, and this is why everyone is wary of the school budget. Discussion was held on coal eff, coal eff expenses for the Head Start program. When the Head Start program was at the McKinnon Building, they paid for their own custodial services, food services, et cetera, and now these items are covered by the school department. Lauren McLaughlin said that the school committee was led to believe by Mr. Wiggins that these expenses would be federally refunded, and that was not the case. Mr. Nimbercar said that this is one of the many problems he's been trying to fix. Councillor Clements said she did notice an early termination clause in the contract which needs to be reviewed. Mr. Nimbercar said he is fixing a lot of backdoor deals that were put in place prior to his coming onboard. A citizen stated that, since 77% of our students get free or reduced lunch, why do we still have a school store paying a person $20,000 a year to run it? Buzz said this is a personnel issue, and he will not discuss this in this type of forum. Point of order was again called by Mrs. Quinney as personnel issues are out of the preview of this meeting. Mr. Nimbercar stated he is giving priority to the health and safety of the kids and believes he has given a budget that is fixing major concerns. Councillor Manor questioned the health and safety of the old high school building and would like to see an environmental study done. Mrs. McLaughlin agreed. Councillor Macucci said a study had been done in the past, and the building should have been condemned. Discussion was brought back to the school budget. Ms. Harnoy said the original school budget request was for a 7% increase, and now it's Ms. Harnoy said the original school budget request was for a 7% increase and now it's at a 3% increase. Counselor Carrasco expressed his concern on past practices of the school department but feels that nickel and diming the school is wrong when other town departments are receiving a 6% increase. Counselor Clemens stated that a 6% increase of $100,000 budget is a lot less than a 3% increase of a $25 million budget. Mrs. Harnoy stated that the overall townside budget shows an increase of 3% over the last year. Counselor Carrasco would like to see the school department budget raised so that it can improve its programs as it is the school rating that will attract people to town. Mrs. Harnoy has asked Mr. Nimberkaw to verify that if he received this budget increase, no jobs would be lost. Mr. Nimberkaw said that no jobs would be lost due to budget reasons. It does not mean that jobs will not be lost for performance issues. Also, no programs would be lost. Counselor Moriarty stated his feelings on the school system stating, "We reap what we sow," and it's important that we are cognizant in the handling of the school department budget and give them the money they needed to improve the system. Mrs. McLaughlin said she is very appreciative to the town for giving the school department the extra percent. Motion was made by Counselor Manna, seconded by Counselor Clemens. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor, five zero. Meeting adjourned at 8:35 PM. Respectfully submitted, Evelyn Rivera, recording clerk. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Moving on to D, Planning and Development, Counselor Clemens.
Thank you. I have no minutes. However, we do have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow evening at 6:30 in the Rice Conference Room. There are a number of items, and I'm going to mention them because some are of interest to people out there. They told me this in the past. So the first is to review the recommendation for keeping livestock on less than five acres and vote to send to council. The second would be a non-binding vote to recommend the acceptance of Maggie Lane. Send that to council. Third would be a non-binding vote to recommend the acceptance of Servant Way and send that to council. And discuss the invitation from the Department of Housing and Community Development to submit an application for units of quality housing on 1-1, I think it's 111, isn't it, Central Street? Or 1-1, Central Street is what it reads, and vote to send that to council. So if you have interest in any of those topics, I suggest you show up at the meeting tomorrow night at 6:30. That's it.
Thank you, Counselor. E, Protection of Person and Property, Counselor Moriarty.
Thank you. The Protection of Persons and Property Subcommittee had a meeting this past Thursday, May 15th. The meeting minutes, because the packet comes out on Thursday night, are not with us tonight, so we will read those at the next one. But the basic idea, we had discussions about issues in terms of traffic and parking on Colav Avenue and Mill Street, which went pretty quickly and swimmingly and remedied. We also discussed the animal control kennel, which is down by the sewage treatment plant, and a chance to basically get half of that paid for through some donations and grants. And we're moving forward with that, getting more information. And then lastly, a lengthy discussion on some proposed promotions within the police department that'll also be coming forward to the council in the near future. And once again, once we have those meeting minutes on hand, we'll read those at the next meeting. At this time, no meeting scheduled. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. F, Town Manager Search Committee, Counselor Markucci.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We held a meeting on Thursday, May 8th, in the George Parent Room. Called the meeting to order at 7:02 PM. In attendance were myself, Sean Moriarty, committee members Pedi Yakabuchi and Terry Lyle. Also in attendance were Counselor Dave Landervan, Monique Manna, Acting Town Manager Karen Harnoy and John Palowski. Committee member Terry Colagnesi was excused. After a few minutes of technical delay, a conference call with Don Jutton of Municipal Resources began at 7:09 to discuss an interim town manager and possible town manager search candidates. Mr. Jutton noted that of the more than 40 applicants for the currently suspended search for a permanent town manager, we do have 40 applicants. He has heard, he has not heard anything from the candidates about the Southbridge position since notifying them that the search was placed on hold pending the outcome of the ballot question on the form of government, town government that's going to be on the ballot. Mr. Jutton said he is familiar with a few individuals who he believed would be suitable to serve as interim town manager once Mr. Reed's contract expires in June. Mr. Jutton provided general information on three potential temporary appointments, each of whom have numerous, excuse me, each of whom have numerous years serving in similar roles for various New Hampshire communities. Mr. Jutton explained these individuals would collect $85 per hour in addition to overnight accommodations and some travel expenses while working, on average, three days a week while the town moves forward following its annual election in June. And I just want to add that that $85 an hour is specifically through his company. So we are looking at other sources to see if we could get someone less expensive. After several minutes of discussion and concerns over the cost and lack of experience and knowledge of mass municipal law, Mr. Jutton offered to help coordinate with the MMA to find an appropriate individual as a direct hire for the interim post. Mr. Jutton will put his suggestions in writing and send a memorandum with greater detail to the committee chairwoman. The conference call concluded at 7:26. Counselor Landervan led a discussion on the necessity of hiring an interim town manager before the election, suggesting the search process begin prior to the election but concluded after voters decided which form of government they prefer. Counselor Manna suggested it may be appropriate to have the town's finance director and police chief take care of the day-to-day duties of the town manager. Ms. Harnoy asserted it is important to have an interim town manager due to the amount of work involved and offered her support for connecting with the MMA to find an interim town manager once the town election is held. The consensus of those in attendance who was in need for legitimate interim town manager would be devoted to that office rather than also performing other roles for the town. With that came the suggestion that Ms. Funia, Mrs. Funia from the town hall and Karen Harnoy would assume those duties. Mr. Yakabuchi inquired on the status and composition of the Town Manager Search Committee once the next town council is seated. Counselor Markucci asserted the membership would remain unchanged as it is a standing committee. Counselor Moriarty said he hoped the committee would remain unchanged but noted that the next town council chairperson could potentially look to disband and reform the committee. The consensus of those in attendance was that the most appropriate course of action would be for no change in membership or charge of the committee. A motion to adjourn was made by Mr. Yakabuchi, seconded by Mr. Lyle. Vote by a show of hands, all in favor. The meeting adjourned at 7:39 PM. Respectfully submitted, Sean Moriarty, recording clerk. And we have no meeting scheduled, Mr. Chair, at this time.
Thank you, Counselor. Moving on to agenda item number five, I just have one announcement, and it's pertaining to the Memorial Day Parade and Observers that will be this Monday coming up. The Southbridge Veteran Council will begin their annual Memorial Day Observers Monday, May 26th, 2014, beginning at 8:30. All units will assemble in front of the Southbridge Town Hall at 8:15 AM in at the Gahr Monument located in front of the Southbridge Town Hall. So I would ask the counselors, whoever can participate in this event, it's important, but more so also the public. Quite frankly, sometimes it's sad to see the showing that we have out there and these people ultimately sacrificed their lives for us, for our freedom today. So I would ask, you know, make us proud and line up the streets and get out there and, you know, wave the flags and there's some great speeches and it's quite a nice event to attend and show some community spirit to. So I would hope the public and the council can get out there for this. Could we make sure this is also on the scroll or, again, to make sure the public is aware of this also? And I thank you on that. That is the only announcement I have this evening. I will move it on to Town Manager's announcements. Mr. Reed.
I have no announcements, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Seeing none. We will move on to agenda item number seven, swearing in and presentation. This evening, we have an airport update. I would ask Mr. Ron Plouffe, airport manager, to come forward and inform us. Thank you, Mr. Plouffe.
Good evening, members of the council, Mr. Reed, Ms. Harnoy. I'm happy to say that the Southbridge Airport is alive and very excited to say that all the pilots and tenants are very happy with what's going on up there. I'd like to take just a moment to update you as where we are in our rebuild program. The Mass DOT people just completed a crack repair project where they were on all the aprons. The runway itself was in very good shape, but they repaired all the cracks that were in the aprons. It took four days. They'll be coming back on May 25th for three days to seal all the cracks that are an inch or less. As we, last year, phase one of the rebuild was replacing the teehanger that blew away in the tornado. That was completed last summer. We also include the, a new water line to the airport last summer. Phase two, which is being on the drawing board right now with money from the FAA, Mass DOT, and insurance, is going to consist of a new sewage septic tank, which the one that's up there is very near to be extinct. So we'll be replacing the septic. We're going to replace the faucet hangar that is partially blown away with a 60 by 65 new building, similar in design to the new teehanger that was replaced. The, we were intending to put up a 1,000-square-foot terminal building and, which was about ready to go out to bid, and then Mass DOT came out with a program to renovate and build new terminal buildings for all 39 general aviation airports in the state of Massachusetts. So they asked us to put off a hold on our program. Their engineers and our engineers are combining their designs for a nice state-of-the-art 2,400-square-foot terminal building, which will include a public meeting room, a pilot's lounge, an administrative area, and a second office that we can rent out. Also, I'm happy to say that we have a brand-new tenant that's beginning effective June 1st but is in place. It's a aviation school that's one of the top 10 in the nation. And I'm happy to introduce you to George Allen. He's the president. He's going to give a little presentation.
Good evening, everyone, members of the council. Let's situate my microphone here so everyone can hear me. Everyone hear me okay? Let's see, I do have a PowerPoint presentation as well. Let me see if I can punch that up for you. All right. My name is George Charles Allen, and I am the president and CEO of the Worcester Regional Flight Academy. We are based out of Worcester, Massachusetts, for the past four years. We started the Worcester Regional Flight Academy in May of 2010, so this month we're celebrating our fourth year, going into our fifth. In that four-year span, we have actually accomplished quite a bit cultivating relationships and partnerships in the local Worcester and central Massachusetts community, namely with JetBlue Airways, who just began operations out of Worcester in November of last year, and also with the David Clark Company in Worcester, who manufactures not only the little green headsets you see pilots wearing, but also the pressurized spacesuits and flight suits that are worn. So it's a pretty interesting company, and they're fully supportive of all of our programs I'm about to talk to you about. Our move to Southbridge actually has caused the company to think a little bit broader and change our business direction a little bit. So in that sense, we changed it over to what's called the AeroVenture Institute. It's got a slightly exciting feel to it, and it's short for aerospace adventures. And we cover everything from flight training to aerospace engineering to rocket science. So it's a pretty comprehensive programming that we offer, and this is for students of all ages and ambitions. So whether you're just looking to learn the stuff for leisure or you want to go off into a professional career, we're here to help guide you along that path. So I've just got a couple of pictures here. Right now, we're starting, as Ron mentioned, to take over residence in this FBO building here at Southbridge Airport. We're starting to kind of spruce up the outside and the inside. I invite folks to come on up and check it out. We'll be happy to sit down and talk with you about all of our exciting programs. And you can see what we've done with the place. I think it's coming along very nice, and I want to thank all the members of the academy, including our dedicated and loyal students that have come up to help us pitch in a hand and help beautify the airport, because it's really a beautiful airport that you folks have here. Our programming, like I said, covers aviation all the way up to aerospace and rocket science, that sort of thing. We also are very, very keen on working with youth. In fact, our entire model is kind of built around that. We recently announced a partnership with the Ecotarium in Worcester. It's the local science museum. It's a very exciting partnership. It begins on June 1st, and we're going to be offering a very wide range of programs. There's too many of them to list this evening, but I'm very happy to speak with everyone individually about that. And aviation has come a long way. You saw that last slide there of a gentleman standing at the edge of a cliff. So unless you're an ultralight-type person, we don't really do that anymore. We've come a very long way, and we want to go even further. GA has really existed for probably about 110 years now. So I always tell the kids that we have in our classrooms, where are we going in the next 100 years, literally in their lifetimes? What can they invent? What can they do? Where can they fit into this industry? That is just absolutely amazing. As Ron mentioned, over the last four years, we've been recognized by the Aircraft Owners and Pilots Association. I guess the best analogy for that is it's kind of similar to U.S. News and World Report when they come out with the college rankings. Last year, they recognized us as being one of the top 10 flight schools in the country out of over 550 of them. And our chief instructor, Bill Allen, who's pictured on the lower corner there, was actually named one of the top 25 flight instructors in the country out of over 2,500 for two years in a row. So we have an excellent, excellent core staff and instructor. Have some pictures here from last year's Free Fly Day. That's something that we're intending to do again this year on June 21st. It's a Saturday. It's a free event for folks to come on up to the airport, have some fun, learn a lot of great things about aviation, and where STEM, all the science, technology, engineering, and mathematics fits into aviation and aerospace. And you get to go for a great flight over the town of Southbridge or over anywhere central Massachusetts and then bring it back to the airport. So it's a lot of fun. And as you can see, these kids here, regardless of your age, everybody is a kid on this day. Everybody comes down with a smile on their face. It's wonderful to see. We also have a student who's actually here with us tonight, Mr. Stephen Johnson. He's 17. He's just graduating, actually just graduated yesterday, and he earned his pilot's license just a day before his graduation. So let's go give him a round of applause for that. It's a significant accomplishment. And Mr. Johnson is just one of our many excellent students up there. He was accepted to both Harvard University and the Air Force Academy. This is the kind of track record that we have with our students, so. He had a very tough decision to make, but he chose to go with Harvard, so he'll be sticking local with us. And he'll actually be working with us over the summer, so you'll have a chance to meet him. As I mentioned, we do a lot with youth, an absolute fun thing for me to do. We also have teacher groups that come out, and what we do is we show them all the aspects of aviation and aerospace and really cool of aviation and aerospace in really cool ways that they can integrate that into their curriculum to get students interested in these types of topics. Not only do we have teachers come out to us, but we go out to them. So that's one thing I really wanted to mention today. I've heard some talk about the school system and whatnot. We are absolutely thrilled to work with the town, to be here, and to run our programs in tandem with the school system, to get kids interested about aviation and aerospace and show them STEM in real-life context. We're going to be doing programs where you could literally build an airplane from scratch that in the end, we roll it out onto the runway once it's certified, and it can fly. It can carry people. But you have to do all of the work to get up to that point. We actually just recently had a glider donated to us as well, which should be arriving in about two or three weeks, and that's going to be one of our first projects of putting an aircraft together here in Southbridge. So that's going to be really fun. But like I mentioned, we also have students that can pursue flight training. One of our programs that we recently began, we can actually, we call it the Rookie Aviator Seminar, and a student could theoretically, this is a brand-new program, so we haven't gone through the whole motion yet, but the program has several things. First, they get flight training, which is an awesome, awesome thing to go through as a student, as Steve could tell you. It really gives you a lot of confidence, a lot of knowledge, and like I keep saying, there's a lot of STEM involved in aviation. The other thing is that it is eligible, again, I can show the curriculum guidelines for this, for high school science elective credit. So a student really interested in these topics can take these courses, complete them, and if the school agrees to it, you know, it meets all of the curriculum requirements, the school can receive high school science elective credit through the program. They can also receive up to six college-level credits before graduating high school through these programs, learning to become a pilot. So they don't need to become a pilot in order to complete these programs. These can be done independently. A lot of it is just knowledge-based, but certainly the options, the avenues are there. So that is one of the many offerings we have. We also work with a lot of nonprofit groups, Boy Scouts, Girls, Inc. We work with WPI summer camps. We have aerospace discovery weekends that we hold every summer. We have youth programs all throughout the year, and again, we're adding more with the Ecotarium. You see some happy Girls, Inc. girls here, sitting in a jet that showed up at Worcester Airport one day. Like I mentioned, we go out to schools, and we work in varying capacities. We could either do just a career day, or we could do a full-on program. This photo is taken from South High School. It was the 11th and 12th grade AP physics class, and they built basically balsa wood gliders from scratch. We gave them limited materials and said, "You've got to figure it out." So we guided them through that. But what I did was in November, I kicked off their session. As a little teaser, I came back in December. We did a field trip out to the airport and did kind of a pilot-for-a-day seminar with them. And then we were at the school for about three days, working with them on designing, building, and then flying the gliders on the third day. And the student group that did the best won a free discovery flight with the academy. So we do a lot of different types of programs like this, and we're absolutely thrilled to do it. Again, we have the partnerships with JetBlue and David Clark Company, which supplement a lot of what we do. For instance, it's kind of hard to see, but the Felix Baumgartner suit, the gentleman that skydived from like 128,000 feet last year sometime, we had his suit on display. The engineers who actually designed it came out, spoke to the kids about the process behind that, went way over time, but it was excellent because they had awesome questions, and the engineers were thrilled about it. Again, just students coming out to the airport and learning all sorts of things. And like I said, this is, youth is one of my biggest focuses in the company, but we accommodate everybody, everybody who's interested in learning through a wide variety of programs. This is Congressman Jim McGovern visiting us at Worcester Airport not too long ago over the winter, and just some photos from what we do. So I don't want to take up too much more time. Again, I'm very, very pleased to be here at the town of Southbridge. I look forward to making my rounds and introducing myself to everyone individually, and we really look forward to working with you folks going forward. I think you've got a beautiful airport, and we're really excited to be here with you. One last thing, I do aerial photography, so if anybody's looking for a really unique shot of the town of Southbridge, or their house, or business, or whatever, give me a call. Thanks a lot.
Any councils have any questions right now? Mr. Plouffe, do you?
I can take questions, sure. No, I just wanted to make one more comment.
Certainly.
Everyone has been anticipating the opening of the restaurant. The bids were open last Thursday. They're now being reviewed by a review committee, and hopefully by the middle of June, we'll have it open. We have a little bit of work to do, but we're hoping for the middle of June. So I can take any questions you have right now.
Hey, first of all, I just want to say it's nice to see that we are moving forward now, and we're going to see great progress and movement. That's very exciting stuff, so I do thank you. Again, my direction, when I brought up the airport, and I know it struck a lot of people, was never intentionally to close the airport, but it was intentionally to do diligence to make sure we're getting the most for our buck in return. And for a while there, for a long time, it was staying stagnant. And this is actually exciting for the town of Southbridge, and we need more excitement to come in this town, and I think it's starting to slowly come our way now. And we would all like to snap our fingers and make everything happen in a hurry, and that's probably all of us councils would say the same thing. Unfortunately, government moves slow, and there's protocol and procedures to do to get it done right. So I thank you for your time and stuff, and I will open up the councils. I know Councilor Maucucci had a question, and then if anyone else.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I just want to say thank you so much for choosing Southbridge. It means a lot to us, and we're very, very excited. And I know I can speak for all the citizenry of Southbridge. It's very special, and we really do appreciate you thinking of Southbridge and making this your home base. What do we expect, what would we expect to see? Is it a service that's open five days a week, weekends, your school schedule, just a little bit, in case anyone's interested?
Sure. Thank you for the question. Basically, we operate seven days a week. Obviously, there's, in terms of the flight schedules themselves, can get pushed around because of weather considerations and that sort of thing. But our ground schools, the courses that I'm talking about, we try to find the most convenient time possible, you know, for high school students. It can be a little tough sometimes. They play sports, and they do all sorts of things, so we've gotten used to that. So we basically, for students, weekends typically work best for them, you know, from the high school, middle school area. But in terms of general flight training, courses like that, it can vary depending on the course, quite honestly. We do things all through the summer, all through the fall, and all through the spring, and the winter as well. So, you know, in terms of actual hard dates for various courses, because we do offer a lot of them, it's just a matter of checking out the website, and we do have an e-newsletter. We have a Facebook page, so we're always pumping the information out there so everyone is current on what we're offering.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing.
Very excited. Thank you.
I have Councilor Moriarty next.
Thank you. Just more of a comment that I think, similar to what everybody's kind of already stated, it is very exciting and very positive news, which is great. And just, you know, just as a note, and it's something I think we'll definitely touch base with you. I think this is something that, you know, the Bicentennial coming up in 2016, that's something that I think we'll definitely tap into, and even just the educational impact that you were talking about in terms of putting that into curriculum. I know we have some school committee members back there, and hopefully they can touch base as well. But, I mean, right off the top of my head, I'm assuming you do things with like the Wright Brothers or World War II dogfights and things like that, that would really help make the subject matter come alive and much more interesting and engaging. So I think that's great, and hopefully it's a very long and prosperous relationship. Thank you.
Thank you. I have Councilor Carrasco next. Do you want to respond to that? You all set? Okay. Councilor Carrasco, then Councilor Manna next.
Through you, Mr. Chair. I, first of all, want to welcome you to Southbridge, and thank you for choosing Southbridge. This is very exciting. I can just, I have a lot of wheels turning right now, but one of the questions I do have, do you have any bilingual staff? Because our community is bilingual, and I think this is something that I think the community as a whole would really appreciate. Do you have that? Do you have the ability, or is that something that you're willing to adapt?
Bilingual.
Bilingual staff?
Not for her.
Okay. Is that something that you? Absolutely. And if the courses that are taken, how long usually are your courses in regards to programming?
Well, it's not the course we're talking about. Some of the ones, like the ones that are based around the high school science elective credit and the college-level credits as well, we try to base those on kind of a semester style, just like a, you know, just like a college would or a school would. And for those who are pursuing flight training, any level, private pilot instrument, commercial or beyond, that's really done on an individual basis. So students can schedule whenever is convenient for them and whenever the weather obviously cooperates with us. So there's a lot of flexibility there. We can also do one-on-one training individually as well if certain course structures don't work, or certain dates don't work, and things like that. So we're very flexible with that, you know, with accommodating our students, so.
Great, thank you.
I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Councilor Manna?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. First, I just have a quick question, Mr. Allen. What was the young man's name again? That?
The gentleman going off to Harvard?
Yes.
Stephen Johnson.
Stephen.
Yes.
Well, I would like to congratulate Stephen. I didn't want to chop his name. That is such an accomplishment at 17-years-old to have his pilot's license and to be accepted into two well-known schools, the Air Force Academy and Harvard, and you took Harvard, where some great, great people came out of. So I congratulate you, and you must be very proud.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I was actually at Southbridge Airport on Saturday. We flew in there as part of my final checkride to get my private pilot's license, so we did a few landings there, and I'm excited to move there with the Flight Academy. So, thank you.
Thank you. I think he deserves one more round of applause. And I also want to thank you for choosing Southbridge. I think this is a great asset for our town, and I look forward to coming up and meeting with you and maybe doing a little tour, and I look forward to taking my children up there as well. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you very much.
Councilor?
Yes, thank you.
Certainly. Councilor Clemmons?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I had had the opportunity to meet Mr. Allen, George, about a week ago, actually, happened to be at the airport and looking around to see what was happening up there in the changeover, and was introduced and heard some of this, but of course, it was being worked on, so mum was the word until everything was properly done. And also thanking you, it was exciting to meet you then and to hear some of the plans that were potential, and to see it come to fruition today is just very, very exciting for us as a community, I think, the opportunities you're going to have. One of the questions I asked you there was your friendliness towards the community, towards the town, and maybe endeavors that, partnerships in terms of holding events there and such, and you were very, very open and honest with anticipating multiple opportunities where the town potentially would have something up there. We had a cops and kids event there last year, and, you know, I was excited to hear that, that it sounded like you wanted to partner up with the community. And I don't know if you want to respond to that comment in terms of what you have planned besides the June 21st date, or is there anything else that we should be looking forward to coming up?
Well, absolutely. First of all, thank you as well. We are also extremely excited to be here, and like I mentioned earlier on, partnerships, cultivating relationships with the community, with other organizations and schools, that's really our model, that's how we like to do things. You know, we don't like to be siloed up off in a corner somewhere. We want to be out there, we want to be engaged, involved, and we want to get kids on a good path. So, yeah, our Free Fly Day, June 21st, please, everyone take advantage of that. It's an incredible opportunity, and we do plan additional activities in the future, not I can comment on right now in terms of open to the public like that, but definitely we have a lot of courses upcoming, so please, aeroventureinstitute.org is the place to check out the upcoming events once we get settled here in Southbridge.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just one other thing, and I mean, you touched a little base just now, and I think the town of Southbridge sometimes lacks this, so I would hope that we are working on our webpage. This is a big thing that needs to be on our webpage, and also on their end, they need, whether we put it on our cable access channel, the more we promote. That's one of the things that the Southbridge Airport suffered over many years, too. People didn't even know we had an airport. It's time, there's great movement starting to go, and it's time, but we need, meaning everyone, need to market the airport and get the word out, because that does bring people to our community, and it helps showcase our community. So as, I know we're just getting everything rolling, but I think that's a huge piece. People look at the website and, you know, they don't know. So again, you have to educate the people and let them know that what we do have to offer, which helps you and helps everyone for the community. So if we could definitely work on that, and the town manager, once we keep on moving forward, that's a huge piece also. Anyone else? Councilor Nicole?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, want to welcome you and thank you for choosing our community. And, you know, it's pretty, pretty good timing that you're here this evening, because we're about to, as you can see, go through the budget, it's a bit dismal, and we're not the only community who's kind of down in the dumps when it comes to that. But one of the things that people can take away this evening is knowing that not every community could see you come into their town, and that's because not any community, not very many communities, actually have an airport, and Southbridge does. I want to thank you, because it's obvious that you're very sincere and very excited and ambitious in your endeavor here, and we have a brand-new school that's just getting up and running, and it's going to take some time before any real results and progress are coming from that school. However, we do have some things like you in that facility. We have teachers from WPI who are in the building and working on engineering classes with the students, and different artists, graphic artists, who are working on, in graphic artist courses with the students. And it would be wonderful for your program to be included in something like that. So while it can be disheartening to hear some of the comments that are made about our school district, it's very encouraging, because it takes a very long time to develop a winning program in a school district, and we need not to fall short in remembering that. It doesn't happen overnight. The school wasn't built overnight. Nobody airlifted it onto the hill. It took a lot of hard work. So I'm very, very happy that that will be a part of this. I might even consider, once I get off this godforsaken council, enrolling in your school myself. So thank you very, very much. Appreciate this.
Thank you very much for the comments, and again, we're very excited to be here, and like I say, very willing to work with you in shaping some kind of aviation/ aerospace curriculum in the schools to get kids interested and motivated and, you know, have, increase the graduation rates by getting these hands-on activities in there and getting them onto a good career path in the future. That's what we're all about, so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. You all set, Mr. Plouffe?
I have a couple more comments. First of all, the goal of the Airport Commission and myself is to get people from Southbridge and the local area, back up the airport, have some fun, have a bite to eat at the restaurant, come over, watch some airplanes, fly, look at them, whatever you want to do with them. We want to get the whole community engaged again. And I'd also like to talk about the excitement. I mean, my first day up there, May 1st, was very exciting for me, because it was a new career for me. Been involved in aviation all my life. My family is aviation. Was almost raised at the airport when I was a kid. Secondly, my second-most exciting day was my first Saturday up there. That's when I got to meet the Allens. They came over, we talked, they flew me to Worcester, showed me their operation, and it just kept moving forward from there. So I say thank you to them, and they're going to be a great, great partner at the airport, and we're looking forward to it to grow.
Thank you. There is a gentleman. Is he looking forward to speak on this airport, or?
I'd just like to introduce Christopher Cockling, who is a, he was a former student of the Worcester Regional Flight Academy, and he's since actually gone off to Emory Riddle Aeronautical University studying aerospace engineering, which is actually the number one rated aerospace engineering program in the country. And I'm going to let Chris be just for a moment. He's my Assistant Director of Aerospace Programming for the Aeroventure Institute, so, Chris.
So I'm very excited to be here alongside the Allens and the Flight Academy. The first flight I ever took was out of Southbridge Airport, actually, back in 2010, I believe. So after that, I went up to Worcester, found out the Flight Academy was there, got my private pilot's license, graduated from Shepherd Hill and went to college, and now I'm back here working with George and the Flight Academy on all of the youth programs that we do. I'm big into tutoring down at school in math and physics and science, so I have a strong background in that, and I'm just really happy that this all happened and came together because I'm, I'm really happy to see, I know there was some destruction up at the airport because of the tornado, and, you know, it was sad to see because I love that airport. So I'm really happy to see it come back and I'm more than happy to be a part of it. So thank you very much for welcoming us into Southbridge and looking forward to a positive future.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
He's our landscaper. No, just one more item. Back a few years ago, there was a group called Friends of Southbridge Airport. They kind of went dormant a few years ago. They're a nonprofit organization, still on the books. There is a group up there right now that wants to resurrect that. They had almost 200 members back in the day, and they really helped the airport. They raised, they raised funds, they help out with chores up there, and we'll be very happy to see them come back.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Thank you very much.
Moving on to agenda item number eight, Citizens Forum. Is there anyone, citizen, that would like to come up and speak tonight on something not on the agenda? Just please state your name and address. Good evening.
James Satily, Pinedale Street. I'm here tonight to clear up what has been developing as a consequence of our June 24th election about changing our government to a town meeting form of government and to clear up some of the anecdotal misinformation that's appeared in the media and other, in other forums. I'm here to announce the availability of the Citizens Guide to Town Meetings, which is published by the Secretary of the State of Massachusetts, or the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And in the guide, it's available, it will be available at Mr. Marino's barber shop for any citizen who wants a copy, and also it'll be available at the Southbridge Fest at one of the booths, I believe, in the next week or so. The table of contacts contains an introduction, town meeting basics, open town meetings and representative town meetings, the two different types of government, annual and a special town meeting. It explains what a warrant is, how town meetings operate, and how to participate in a town meeting. It also gives some guidelines for procedures and motions and has a bibliography and acknowledgements for, for the research if someone wants it. This is the, the device that's available to the town, townsfolk here in Southbridge, and I believe if they want to contact myself or Mr. Marino, we'd be glad to help them get a copy. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Manin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. You can also get a copy of that Citizens Guide to Town Meetings on our Secretary of State's website. If you go to mass.gov, you can get a copy of it right there on his website. There's a, you can click on the link, and it's for every form of government. So I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
John Pulaski, 3 Genuson Street. I'll make this real quick. The other, I believe it was last week, could have been the week before, the Board of Health meeting. I came to Town Hall because of Southbridge News, it said that the Town Manager Search Committee was meeting downstairs, but it was promptly posted they were meeting up here. But what I did discover in the Veterans Room or the Lawrence McDonald Veterans Conference Room was a Board of Health meeting. And I'm glad I came down for the, the Search Committee meeting because something happened at the Board Health meeting that I'm very concerned about. I've done a little research, actually a lot of research since then, and my initial concern is, I believe, warranted. They approved, it, it wasn't on the agenda, that's a minor issue. Whether or not it was a violation of the open meeting law isn't one-tenth of one percent of my concern. And if a complaint is made, I doubt it will, I, as a citizen, I have virtually no power except maybe to hold it up a month or so. What they approved has to be approved by the DEP yet. A few other towns apparently are foolish enough to allow this in the Commonwealth. But there's a material, it's carcinogenic, it's called coal bottom ash, it's what's left over after you burned coal. It, it's, it's not a pleasant thing. When, when they were passing it around, maybe they were kidding around the meeting before, there were six, it was in a Ziploc bag and they were suggesting not to touch it. I'm sure if someone touched it, it wouldn't give them necessarily a cancer, unlikely. But it's not the type of thing I believe that we, we should have in our town, invite into our town. Now, we have carcinogenic material, I believe there was some at the bottom of Woodstock Road that was responsibly handled by the state when they did that roadwork, as responsibly as they could handle it. But I believe we couldn't bring our own contaminated soil up to our landfill, yet we are bringing this material, which is heavy, does not decompose the same way, let's say, clean fill, like they use in Sturbridge, decomposes. If you use clean fill, it can actually assist in the decomposition of the garbage. This material is heavy, I believe it does not, from what I read from 310 CMR, which are the state guidelines on landfills, it does not get added to that or is included if we put 300 and 5,000 tons a year. They don't count that as part of the tonnage. In other words, this is what helps fill up our landfill faster. And it, you know, I'm not being, I, I insist on not being a source sport. Okay, the town voted to allow garbage to come in our town. I'm just one voter. In fact, not having been on the council, it didn't matter, it was a 5-4 vote. Then in the Board of Health, it was also, I believe, a 3-2 vote. You know, if we're going to bring garbage in the town to make money, I know the money's helpful, so be it. But to bring in carcinogenic material, you know, when I, I saw you people working hard to decide a bylaw, hours it seemed, on whether or not we put, how much, what percentage of our windows do we fill? I swear, the whole time, I didn't even know this was coming, I was wishing, because we've been bringing contaminated soil up there all along. Why, why can't we have a bylaw to stop contaminated soil? I bet if that went on the ballot, less than 20% of people in town would approve of that. And we're only getting $5 or $6 a ton for this stuff. I mean, I, I wouldn't let you bury that in my backyard for $10,000 a ton, and I need $10,000 to pay my taxes. So you know what I'm saying? It's really a bad thing. And if you have the power, I don't know if the council has the power, to write a bylaw to stop contaminated soil from being imported in town. But if you do, and if it's something that can be done quickly, I strongly encourage you to try to do that. And also, I know that we're doctors that had put their name in to be on the Board of Health. We, we have some good people on that Board of Health, and they're giving their time, and I appreciate that. But I really think we need a person with an understanding of human physiology and, and, you know, medical problems on our Board of Health. I read old newspapers, I've been reading a lot of our old newspapers in the 30s and 40s and 50s, when we had three and four members on the Board of Health that were doctors. I think at least one would be a great thing. I know Dr. Kenny put his name in. I, I don't know if he's still interested. I know there's another doctor that was interested. For some reason, they were not selected, but I might be first seven of our Board of Health if two more doctors are willing to go on. Thank you for your time. You know, and one last thing, I didn't know the good people that are going to be at our airport were coming here. When it's dry, if we have a dry spell, that stuff gets up in the air. I'm not trying to, I, I think you guys can stop that, you know, I think you can stop that black stuff, especially if you have someone willing to invest money in a school right next to that place. You know, if, if it's getting in the groundwater by the, by the airport, certainly it could get in the air up all, all around there, someone drives the wrong way to get by there. You know, the stuff is pouring into Charlestown, there's going to be some extreme fines if that stuff pours into Charlestown, the town does share in liability. So, so let's protect our health and our financial best interest. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
Thank you. I have Counselor Clemmons first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. It's interesting that Mr. Pulaski would bring up the airport and the landfill because when I was visiting, I actually did address this question with Mr. Allen, since it seems to always be a topic for discussion in our community, unfortunately above all else, which is a shame. Mr. Allen, could you come up a minute? If that's, would that be okay? Because I, I was going to say something, but I didn't realize he was still in the back of the room. I noticed his seat was empty, and I was going to reiterate his comment, but I'd rather not.
No, certainly.
Thank you. Sorry to put you on the spot.
I lost, I lost the train.
Yeah, I thought you might have left anyway. It's okay, you don't have to stay for our budget, it's okay. But when I, when I met with you, I said I've got a kind of off-the-cuff question or comment, and I, I didn't want to put you on the spot then, but I'm going to do it again now, anyway. I did, and I said, we have a landfill next door, if you hadn't noticed or so, and how did you feel about that?
Right.
And, and you made some, some comments that I was happy to hear, but maybe you could reiterate a few of those comments, or how do you feel about the landfill next door and the concern Mr. Pulaski might have just brought up with dust or something?
If I, if I recall correctly, I, I mean, I've only been up at the airport a short time. We, we have been doing flight training operations out of Southbridge for a while in terms of, it is a destination airport, so we originate from Worcester, get practice and control airspace, and then we come over to Southbridge and practice some landings there and then go back to Worcester. But I believe your question about the landfill, I, my response was something along the lines of I didn't even notice it was there.
And then I asked you more pointedly questions, do you have any concerns with it being there? And you commented to me, if I'm accurate, that, yes, there are regulations for the heights.
Right, right, which I know, I believe the town is closely monitoring.
Right, that we monitor.
Right.
And we asked about birds, and you did make a comment that, well, they shoot them or scare them, I guess.
Well, no, scaring them is preferable to shooting any, any day of the week.
Right, so we talked about the birds.
Absolutely. There, there are, especially as air traffic will increase once the diner opens and with our flight operations coming in to play in a, in a few weeks here, we have noticed a lot of bird activity there, some large hawks and other little birds as well. And I, I think it would just be a matter of someone at the airport being certified to use not firearms, but fireworks, something that just makes a loud crack and scares the birds off. This way, we, ourselves and the general aviation community and anybody else using an airport, we can mitigate the risk of a bird strike, which, which can, can be pretty damaging and costly, so.
Well, and I don't mean to make light of it. I mean, it's a serious concern for, for, on many of our citizenry with the landfill, so that was something that I brought up to you. And I just, you've moved here, you've made a commitment to...
Right.
Move forward.
Absolutely.
Super. Thank you for coming up, I appreciate it. Thank you for indulging me.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come?
Yes, I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Counselor Manin.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. My concern is that, well, first of all, I want to address the doctors being on the Board of Health, because we run as a town, it's not a mass general law that requires our Board of Health to have a doctor on the board, to where if we were to run as a city, it would be a requirement. So it's not a requirement, but we do ask that the people that serve on the Board of Health have some general knowledge, and I would like to hope that our town manager, who makes these appointments and we ratify them, would bring forth qualified people, so to say. So if we ran as a city, yes, then we would, it would be required that we had a doctor on our Board of Health, but because we don't, we don't, it's not a requirement. And to bring up the coal ash and be in a carcinogen, well, to me, if you don't have all the facts or whatnot, I don't think our state would put us in harm's way. And if Mr. Pelletier, I know he's in the audience, if he could respond to that, or would like to, or if he doesn't, I mean, but to me, that's a scare tactic for the community, and I don't like that. So if you could respond to that, Mr. Pelletier, I would appreciate that.
The coal ash we're speaking of is a bottom ash. It is textured more like a vermiculite than what you would burn in your wood stove at home. So when the winds kick up, it shouldn't be kicking up. Comes in with a certain percentage wet, so it stays where it belongs. And the Board of Health approved that it can be put in the landfill, but under conditions that DEP, it's, it's being done through a permit, it used to be done through what's called a BUD, Beneficial Youth Use, but DEP changed that process for a whole lot of their items, road sand, stuff like that, they're permitted now. So Board of Health approved it, but it's still going to go through a DEP approval process.
So the state has to approve it?
The state will have final say on it.
After you, and, okay, thank you.
Common practice throughout Massachusetts at a lot of the landfills. And as far as it's not counted as tonnage, the town gets their share of it, but it's not counted towards tonnage, towards the waste, because they're using it for cover material. No matter what we use for cover material, that's not counted towards the waste. They'll be mixing it with soil, and at the end of every day, a six-inch layer of cover material has to be put over all the trash to prevent the problems that the airport was just worrying about, excessive birds and excessive litter floating around. So there's a requirement for cover every day.
And this will be monitored closely if it is approved by the DEP, by the Board of Health and by the DEP as well?
It will, we will know how much tonnage comes in, we will, I believe DEP requires it to be tested for content, acid content, stuff like that, twice a year. My recommendation to the board was that, at least initially, until we get a sense of what we're dealing with, we should probably have it tested quarterly to make sure the extremes, how far it, it varies from its expected state. So we'll be testing it initially more than DEP will require, but then it'll fall into a DEP schedule.
Thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
I also, I'm not positive of all my board members' careers, but I think Anuma Bamark is a physician.
Oh, thank you very much.
I believe he is. I'll confirm that, but I think he is.
Okay. Well, my point was that because we run as a town, it's not a state requirement that we have a doctor on the Board of Health.
We have a very strong grouping. We've got engineers, we've got a school teacher, chemical engineer, I believe a mechanical engineer and dean and medical background in Mark.
Thank you very much.
It's a good group.
Thank you. Are there any other citizens that would like to come forward?
Good evening. Evening. Ray Garcia, 497 Charlestown Street, homeowner, taxpayer, and voter. To you or to the DPW subcommittee person, I get around other towns, their crosswalks are already painted and they're colored in between, yellow, red, green, so you can see them. The edge of the roads painted in a lot of, other smaller towns in this town. My DPW cuts lawns for my tax dollars. I know we get Chapter 90 money. I fueled up this weekend, two motorcycles and two other vehicles and my lawnmower. So I paid a lot of taxes on Chapter 90, gas tax, this weekend. I ride through Southbridge, go by the registry, there's an orange barrel, drain hole, drainage caving in. Other parts of this town, Hamilton Street, one of the main areas, shake, rattle and roll your, your vehicle. See the DPW guys? Good guys, I like them all. I don't know who's leading the ship, cutting lawns at Union Wages. Want to save some money, hire some kids to cut lawns. We need our roads with taxpayers, they're already, Mr. Lanny was here about homes, prices. Can't get to some of their homes because you have potholes. The roads are falling apart this year. So where is my DPW budget going? Anybody can answer me?
Just, just quickly on...
Just quickly on-
This is, here it is, almost the middle of May, June's coming up. Are we going to paint the lines in December when it's snowing the ground? I've gone to other towns, they're already painted and they're already fixed up. We haven't even started.
Just quickly, you know, me and the vice chair do meet with the town manager every Thursday, and that was one, just one area that we talked about, and I would ask Councilor Vandal to also put that on there again. And I noticed a lot of orange barrels flowing around town and stuff at which catch basins and there's many of them. I know at one point, they were doing them internally, but I know also in another time, because there was so many of them, they did subcontract out that to feed that. So if Councilor Vandal could put also on that meeting to see if we can get a timeline from our intern director up there and get a timeline on that. Far as Chapter 90 money, Mr. Reed said it the best, and this is not an excuse, but our Chapter money, like every other community, gets chopped back, and to fix roads alone is very, very expensive. And I noticed it, so I can agree with what, there's some certain areas in this town that need some major overhaul on roads, and I totally understand what you're saying. But again, when you're only allotted so much money to repave a section of road, and a section of road does cost a lot of money.
It does, it costs a lot.
It only goes so far.
But some of these, they'll be sitting there for a month or two, right around the registry, so people can't pull in and you're trying to pull out. It's a main artery. Central Street is a main artery coming into this town. It's, you want to make Southbridge look good? How about the main arteries? My street, no one sees in a way, Charlestown Street, but it's used a lot, but Worcester Street, Central Street, Hamilton Street, main arteries. You want it to look good, or at least not bounce your car out.
So I will, we will have a subcommittee meeting, and Councilor Vandal will post, make sure the meeting is posted, but we will get some questions and answering on that, because I do hear some of your concerns, some we can't handle because of financial, but some of it we can do.
Then let the lawns grow. A lot of us drop, I'll say just about everybody here drove here. We're not all going into the parks. Let's cut down the lawns. We don't need them done every week. The roads were all on every day going to work, coming home from work, driving around town, trying to bring business in. Go by Capello Park, yes, I go by that every day. It looks nice, but what am I benefiting from it? Going out of the road, I'm bouncing around, that's where I want my money spent. Paved the park, paint it green. All the parks, we got all these little parks all around town. Pave them all, paint them green, and no maintenance after. I really can't see two, three guys-
I understand.
-when our roads are falling apart.
I understand what you're saying, but realistically, we're not going to be painting our parks green.
Well, we shouldn't be maintaining them as pristine and our roads falling apart, not with tax dollars. Like I said, it's going in the wrong direction. With too many little parks, we don't need them all. We do need better roads when people do come into town, they can not fall apart in town, break down.
So in the spirit of going back and forth, though, we, Councilor Vandal will call a subcommittee meeting, and we will try to get some better answers for you, so if you'd like to.
I will.
Actually, all our meetings are open to the public, so.
I know, they're all open, no one shows.
Okay. Councilor Clemens?
Thanks. Well, in the spirit of moving this forward, we have our DPW interim. Do we have a schedule? Could we just ask her if there's a schedule for when we're starting sidewalks? And do you have any estimated timeframe for some of the repairs he's speaking of? If we just, even if it's something he doesn't want to hear, let's just ask it and move forward.
The good news is we actually got some additional Chapter 90 funds from the state because of the pothole situation, so we will have a contract going out for those repairs. There is an inordinate number of catch basins that are failing, but that's also because of the conditions that we had this winter. We're up to over 44, which is a large number. We are talking about putting a bid out also for that to do additional catch basin repairs, because we don't think we can handle all those in-house. Some of the things we do are general cleanup items that we do in the spring. I know there's some questions about when we're going to paint. We don't paint until we get to the point where we're already cleaned the roads and swept them, so that's one of the first things we do. Right now, we're preparing for Memorial Day, trying to make the town look nice. We get just as many complaints that we aren't doing a good enough job in the cemeteries in different areas. So it's hard to please everyone. I can say, you know, we're going to make an effort. As soon as we're done preparing for Memorial Day, you'll see crews out tackling a lot of the major catch basins in the popular areas to do the repairs, because we do do some of those in-house. But it takes time, and it does take money. So we have it on the schedule. It will be coming up. Right now, everything's in preparing to get ready for Memorial Day.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to come forward? Seeing none, we're going to move on. Number nine, vote to appoint James A. Dyer of Southbridge to the Library Board of Trustees for a one-year term effective immediately through June 30, 2015, due to a member's resignation. Do I have a motion?
No, move.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none. Roll call, please.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Langivan?
Yes.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Marucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicole?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. Motion passed. Agenda item number 10, vote to give permission for the installation of a playground at West Street School, contingent on all concerns and liability being met. Do I have a motion?
No, move.
Second.
Any discussion on this? I believe Joe Condon's in the audience, if there is any questions on this. Councilor Nicole?
Thank you. I do have a little concern about voting on something when I don't know if all the concerns and liabilities are going to be met. So, you know, I just, it just doesn't seem to be enough. I'm normally very supportive of just about everything I see here. I have, I don't think I can vote to support this without more information on what the concerns and liabilities being met will be.
Joe, maybe you could answer that question?
Thank you. I believe that the EHS Subcommittee was going to look into the liabilities.
So we're waiting to hear back on that. That has not all been fully answered.
Councilor Clemens, go ahead. Yes, we were at the EHS meeting, we had a lot of discussion on this. I wouldn't have expected to see it up here, actually, tonight, until that the reason for recommending it to council as long as everything was covered was in anticipation, instead of having another EHS meeting to then approve it once it was met, that they would meet them, bring it to us, and then we would vote on it. So I'm kind of surprised it's actually on the agenda until we do have the answers to the minutes. And there should have been, there was information in the minutes. We had the concerns laid out in terms of liability insurance and you had a few other things from the company that you were lining up in terms of the installation, I think, or so. But we haven't, we haven't seen that, we haven't seen that, like the concerns. I agree with Councilor Nicole, I would have postponed the vote until we were assured by it. It was that the town manager's office was going to make sure certain things were covered, or, I don't know, I don't have the minutes in front of me, but I just remember we talked about everything that we thought that was a problem, and we said we would recommend it positively if these things were done, so. Do you have the list with you at all, my lady?
Well, we do have the list that was attached in our packet, and-
Right, we have this.
Right. And it's my understanding that this project is not going to start until we have all the answers.
Right.
And I believe that this is an endorsement-
Right.
-to say that the town, this council fully supports the project-
Moving forward, right.
-and moving forward with it, but this project is not going to start until we have everything in place that needs to be in place.
Right. So, yeah, I mean, it's kind of a two-way. I agree, and so I know that it was in limbo, that was the problem. It was-
Just, again, I will take some of the, absolutely some of the blame, because obviously I do the agenda, and I know I did, I came in at the end of that conversation with it all, so I thought we were okay on moving forward with it. So that's why I put it on the agenda. But we can postpone it until we just get that, but I know they do want to move forward. So if we can get the answer as soon as possible on this, because it seems like we're just waiting for that one piece, am I correct on that?
I know, but I don't see the reason for postponing it. We're doing other things as a council. You know, we're in Subcommittee for PPP last week, and we're going to go ahead with promotions for the police department and move ahead with that, and we don't have any answers, so what's the difference? We're saying yes to one thing and no to something else. We're endorsing something pending the knowledge and approval that everything is going to be met. The project is not going to start. It's a vote of endorsement to say, yes, we want this. This committee's been working very hard for years to get this done. So I just don't want to neglect it or put it off until there's a new council elected, just like what was stated in another Subcommittee at the end of the week.
Agree.
Councilor Nicole?
Thank you. I'd like to respond to that. I don't not want to see this come out, however, the town's children will be playing on this playground, and I want to be sure that, you know, if you have concerns and liabilities to be met, that that all happens before anybody puts pen to paper and signs anything stating we're going forward on a West Street School playground. And I find it to be very different from the Subcommittee that we had last week, which went into complete detail on the promotions for police officers. Very different than this. I am totally in support of a playground at West Street School. I guess I just would have assumed that I wouldn't see something like this without a little bit more, you know, finality to it. That's all I'm saying. So, you know, as far as my name being in support or not in support of a West Street School playground, yes, I am in support of a West Street School playground, but there's no details, and that's what's concerning me. As long as you're giving me the assurance that all that's going to come to be, I'll vote for it. But we don't normally see items on the agenda like this, to vote on something like this. So that's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Yeah, that's all.
Just one question, maybe I'll yield to Ms. Funia. Maybe she could answer some of the questions before we continue on with our, and then I'll recognize you, so I promise.
I'll make a motion to amend it.
Thank you. I just, I don't know if the concerns are insurance-related. I didn't hear any specific concerns, but parks and playgrounds of the town are covered under our policy. If there are concerns about building the playground, we also have coverage for volunteers, and what we typically do is have volunteers sign a waiver. So if those are some of the concerns, if there's other concerns.
And that was discussed, Ms. Funia.
Okay, thank you.
Right. Everything that you just stated was discussed at a prior meeting also. I think Councilor Clemens might have been excused from that meeting one time.
No, no. That was you.
That was you. Okay, so you were at both of them for that.
Yeah, that is ringing now.
Yeah. So she did speak about volunteerism, having a licensed contractor on site once this got the approval, and I don't want to say approval, but the endorsement-
Right.
-of the council to say, yes, this is something that we want, yes, this is something that needs to be replaced. The equipment, from what I understand right now, no one's allowed to play on that equipment, and it really should be roped off or taken down. It should have been, but it has not. So the kids at West Street School now play in the tennis courts because they're not allowed on that equipment.
If I may, the Southbridge Elementary PTA has a playground that was purchased in October to donate to the town. It right now sits on coal lab in a box. So in order for the existing playground to be removed, we would need town permission from the town council, as well as permission from the town council to hold a community build day to build this structure that now sits in a box since October. So that, to hold that community build day, we follow the appropriate protocols for the town, but in order for us to do anything, we would need permission from the town council. And my only concern is that this project has been going on for a couple of years now, and I feel bad that that playground sits in a box. And while we have it, we just need to get it up and built and have these kids be able to play on something.
Can I make a motion to amend, to add, and signed off by the town manager? You know, being met and acknowledged or signed off by the town manager?
Just one second, please.
Okay, sorry.
Councilor Carrasco, did you have a question, though? He was before you.
Oh, well, this motion can be done any time.
Yes, if I, through you, Mr. Chair, if I understand Ms. Funia, we are covered through our insurance policies for volunteers and volunteer work and also the building of this thing, the contractor, through our policy.
Correct.
Okay. So we're talking about liability, but this playground has been broken for several years now, and the town has not taken any kind of responsibility to do anything about it. So a child can go there tomorrow, break an arm, guess who's liable? We are. We're trying to push something forward. I understand the concern, but if we didn't have concerns about liability of something that's broken, why have something liability about something new that we're trying to improve for our children? That's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you. Councilor Clemens, again.
I'm going to reiterate my motion to add, after being met and signed off by the town manager's office, or town manager, existing, acting, existing town manager, whatever we have at that moment. So once you've compiled your stuff and you have your workday and all that stuff lined up, as long as he, somebody in authorities, yeah, if they've met our criteria, it goes. We approve it, they ratify, he rati, somebody ratifies it. He, she, somebody ratifies it, and it goes into, you give us a date for that build day, we all can be there and help you.
I'll second that motion.
Just the short part.
Absolutely. Stacy, are you all set with the amendment?
She wrote, after met, signed off by town manager's office?
Signed off, acknowledged, how, anybody have a better suggestion?
Signed off by the town manager's office.
Was it necessary, though? I don't understand what we're doing.
I think it just allows Ms. Congdon to make sure that she's done her duties and talked with insurance, you know, our people, to make sure that those waivers are in the proper format, or just, it's just to check some balance.
But Ms. Funia's already stated that we have something, right? Yeah. Well, I don't know what else we're looking for.
I just, can I, can I just say one thing?
Certainly.
I'm voting yes.
First of all, it was just made clear to me, something that this doesn't make clear at all. The lack of communication on this particular voting item is blaring. This particular playground, West Street School, unlike the other plague, school playgrounds in the community, this is the town, this is the town purview, where the other ones are school purview. That should be included in something like that. First of all, that's strange. It's a very odd thing that you have one school that has a playground that the town is responsible for, where all the other playgrounds attached to the schools are the school's authority. I mean, that is, that answers the question to me, why am I looking at this? Okay? Very simply. There's nothing here that states that. Big problem that we see a lot in this town, lack of communication. Only one, it's, that's what you call a hybrid, just like this town, where we're a town that could be a city. This West Street School playground is the town's responsibility versus the school's responsibility. That answers the question. There's nothing, I can't read through this and know that without it telling me that. Otherwise, we wouldn't be doing this. They would be doing this. So with that said, as this is a town responsibility, then it belongs with us. Concerns and liabilities being met should be clear, but it isn't. You know, if it helps, I'm in support of Councilor Clemens's amendment, and it's not that I don't trust anybody, but I don't trust anybody. If we've got rotted-out equipment on, next to the school where the kids could get hurt, that should have been removed some time ago. I think I, my, my lack of trust is well-founded. So I will vote in support of this, as long as somebody is going to sign off once the quote-unquote "concerns and liabilities" are met. But that's why I'm a little upset by this, because it's not clear at all. I'm not, I don't sit here and just blindly vote on things. There's nothing here that tells me what I just found out from a council. So I will vote for this, because that clarifies a lot. And I don't know who, anybody else up here that knew that. I certainly didn't.
Well, that was something, Counselor, and I'm, I'm not making any excuses, believe me, but I just think that the recording secretary, it probably was left out of the minutes, and that's probably something I should have stated when I was reading the minutes, but I didn't.
It's okay.
It is the only piece of school property that is town-owned. But, you know, you, you read the minutes and...
It's a weird thing.
It's a weird thing. They, they weren't there, and I did not think, in reading the report, or to even announce it at a meeting, that it, that that piece of property is town-owned. So I take full responsibility for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counselor Moriarty, do you want to?
Thank you. Just through you to School Committee member Congdon, just quickly, do you have a ballpark as to how soon these concerns would be met in terms of satisfying, whether it's at the town manager, the council, whomever?
On the community build day, my understanding is that the town will provide the liability waiver forms. In previously speaking with Ms. Ernst, the, on that site, well, the Southbridge Elementary PTA will hire a licensed construction supervisor for that playground, who's licensed in the state of Massachusetts. People 18 and over are the only ones allowed on that site, so they will have to sign those waivers that will be provided from the town. And that was my understanding through the town. The Southbridge Elementary PTA also has their insurance, but it's town property, so.
So if I may, then my understanding from, from looking through at the documentation in our packets here, the concerns were, were just making sure that it's not on concrete or asphalt, because falling on concrete hurts, especially kids, not having anyone under 18, which you've addressed, and calling dig safe or electrical, which is state law anyways, anyway, so I assume that that's kind of a foregone conclusion. And going through, there's nothing else in here in terms of any other concerns or issues or questions. Admittedly, I was not able to make it to that EHS meeting, so if there were others that are not reflected, then, then whatever. But, so in those regards, to me, it seems as if these concerns have really kind of already been addressed and are either in process to the point where I'm fine just going forward with it personally, or are taken care of. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Clemens.
Thanks. As somebody who recommended this, there were other concerns. There was removal of the old playground set. There were costs. Was this going to cost the taxpayers any money? And the answers were no. And they were the answers of just removal and disposal of the old equipment and prep work for the whole site, and there were all those things. But again, we felt confident after that long discussion that you would, you were going to handle all those elements. The PTA and your group would handle everything, let us know what you were doing and when it was going to happen, get the waivers, get the engineer, who's coming from the company who provides the play set, and it's, which is quite beautiful. It'll be a wonderful asset, of course, once it's installed, and then just make it happen. So those were, we did address money and logistics and accidents and, you know, everything pretty much. So those were the things, I guess, we're thinking about, making sure. Sorry.
The Southbridge Elementary PTA is funding, we fundraised, we raised money from local businesses, as well as parents from West Street School. So all of that money went into play for the playground structure. We also have money set aside for the rest of the project, for the concrete. But our hands were tied. We couldn't go getting estimates for removal without town permission. And we're having donors donate various things, such as the mulch and other things, but before they could go onto the land, they needed that town permission.
Thank you. Counselor Manna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you. Unfortunately, I was not here at that subcommittee meeting, so I, I wasn't able to hear all that was said. I guess the thing I find most disappointing is the fact that we've had this playground in such disrepair for so long, and another playground's sitting in a box, and it's just now coming forward. So I would like to thank Mrs. Congdon for all her hard work and getting this, getting this to move forward at a faster pace. Thank you very much. And that's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Just quickly, in the spirit of things, Ms. Congdon's been in communication with me. I said I want to refer to Counselor Markucci, and that's where we are right now. And unfortunately, sometimes all the things that are said in subcommittee meetings aren't all typed out in our meeting minutes. But trust me, they're hashed out in our meeting minutes. So, I mean, this is a positive thing for the town of Southbridge. Yeah, it's pretty weird that, you know, one playground is on town property, the other one is on school property, which is weird. But, you know, moving forward, I'm going to go back to, do we, we have the motion amended, and we have a second. Any questions on the amendment? And could I have you to read back the amendment to make sure we're all on the same page? Please.
Vote to give permission for the installation of a playground at West Street School, contingent on all concerns and liabilities being met, signed off by the town manager's office.
Any discussion on that? This is on the amendment. Roll call, please.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
No.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no?
Motion for the amendment passes. Now we will vote on the motion itself. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Counselor Markucci, you have something to say?
Yes, Mr. Chair, through you, excuse me, to Mr. Reed. Mr. Reed, could you please make sure that this is done as soon as possible? Sign off on a document. I just, I don't want to delay it, and I think it's really unnecessary, but in the spirit of the council, I voted yes, but I think it was unnecessary, and I really want to endorse this. It's ignorant if we don't get this done as soon as possible. Thank you.
With that being said, the next agenda, then after that, we're going to take a quick recess before we get in the nuts and bolts of the budget, so.
Excuse me. Before you do, I don't know if any other council members have noticed our agenda, but there seems to be...
Typo down below, numbers.
Well, the numbers are all off, and I don't know if we have to vote each one of those to change it.
We can, just to clean it all up. Again, it's typo.
I know. I just want, well...
There's a lot of that.
Ms. Harnoyes, if you look at Agenda Item 11, then 12, after 12, it's 11, and then so on and so forth. So it is off, and it should probably be voted to just correct it. No?
No. Point of order? It's my understanding, if you read it the way it's supposed to be, it's then done. As long as you don't read it, and then, because then you would have to amend it. So make it clear the first time, and we should be, according to the rules, good. That's my point.
What's that?
Thank you.
Okay, generated number 11, vote to change the name of the Veterans Conference Room to the Lauren Larry E. McDonald Veterans Conference Room.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this?
James Satilli, Commandant of the Southbridge Marine Corps League, Detachment 1094. We're here to announce that we support, we hope, we support any action to change the name of the Veterans Room to the Larry McDonald Room. Larry was a United States Marine who in 1950 was taken from sea duty aboard a battleship and went to the amphibious forces that invaded North, South Korea at Incheon on September 15th. The battle lasted till September 19th. On the morning of the 15th, Larry, as the fog lifted, Larry went over the seawall and attacked the forces of North Korea and was wounded by shrapnel in the leg. Larry also fought his way to Kimpo Airport and on to Seoul and on to the Cho Sin Reservoir, where he fought under Chesty Puller, a general in the United States Marine Corps from the 1st Marine Division. Larry was a great Marine, and we believe he's standing his watch today in heaven. And we support the council on any positive vote on this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Moriarty.
Thank you. Just, just wanted to kind of note that I can't think of anything more appropriate than this, in that Mr. McDonald certainly, aside from perhaps the veterans' agent, and no offense intended to anybody else, but has probably done more for veterans in the community than, than anyone else. And, and so this, this is a guy who served his country and, and for many, many years here, has served his, his community and town. So I think it's, it's fitting to kind of respect both of those hats that he once wore. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Nicola.
Thank you. I'd just like to thank you, Mr. Chair, because it was you who came up with this idea, and it was certainly appropriate. And I think that barring none, we don't have anybody in this community that has volunteered as much time, free of charge, as the late Larry McDonald. And it's kind of interesting, but when you look at the scores of volunteers that are in this community, there's a huge portion of those people that are former veterans, and that says something. So I just want to thank you, because I think that this is, this is well-deserved, and its time has come. Thanks again for doing this.
Thank you. Any other councils? Yes, yeah. I know there's represent from the McDonald family, if they'd like to come up and say something. Good evening.
My family and I would like to thank you, councilors, for recognizing my dad by dedicating a room in his name. We really appreciate it, and thank you all very much. He enjoyed this town very much. He loved it with all his heart. And I want to thank you.
Thank you. And again, it is, as most councils already said, it's definitely, it's just the right thing to do. It's very easy. He gave to his country. He served on this council for many years. He served on the school committee for many years. As everyone said, he gave many, many hours of time to this community. Memorial Day Parade, you know, he worked hand-in-hand with Mike Trombley, so there's numerous things. So this, as I said it before, and it went before subcommittee, and it's really, this is a no-brainer, because this is what, very well-deserved. So I thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
With that being said, I have a motion in a second. I do need to have the roll call, please.
Counselor Markucci?
Yes.
Counselor Moriarty?
Yes.
Counselor Nicola?
Yes.
Counselor Vandal?
Yes.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemens?
Yes.
Counselor Landervan?
Yes.
Counselor Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you. And we are going to take a 10-minute recess and then reconvene. Thank you. Agenda item number 12, vote to adopt the FY 2015 Town of Southbridge General Fund operating budget per the attached voting document in the amount of $47,702,369 to be funded as follow, raise in appropriate, $43,922, excuse me, $43,922,244. Transfers from other available funds. Sales of the street list book, $500. Cable operating account, $124,649. Septic loan program, $6,046. Debt service reserve, $672,500. Pre-pupial care interest, $2,000. Polling hours, $96. Armory debt service reserves, $56,544. Access road debt services, $270,690. Library incentive grant, $15,000. Landfill reimbursement fund, $56,000. Sale of lots and graves, $1,100. Subtotal transfers from other available funds is $1,205,125. Other transfers, landfill reimbursement fund, $575,000. Landfill royalty funds, $1,100,000. Free cash, $900,000. Subtotals of other transfer funds, $2,575,000. Total general fund budget is $47,702,369.
So moved.
Second.
I will pass it over to Counselor Markucci, and she will go down. Again, if you have any questions or concerns, just put your hand up, and we'll, we'll hold, but we will get back to that area, okay? Thank you, councilors. Go ahead, Counselor Markucci.
Thank you. Town council, $16,670. Town manager, $260,858. Town accountant, $152,647. Assessors, $186,539. Town treasurer-collector, $330,117. Town attorney, $125,500. Town clerk, $164,214. Elections and registration, $63,047. Planning board, $3,726. Economic development, $80,792. Cable TV advisory committee, $124,649. And this is administration, audit fees, $32,000. Copy machine cost, $18,000. Telephone, $41,000. Postage, $47,000. Natural gas, $85,000. Heating fuel, $201,000. Property management miscellaneous, $55,000. Land management miscellaneous, $5,000. Reserve for property repair, maintenance, and demo, $50,000. Fuel and lubricant, $250,000. Data processing, $193,500. Council reserve, $100,000. Contributory retirement, $2,806,812. Sick vacation leave buyback, $36,300. Recruitment and processing, $7,100. In-service training, $900. Employee Medicare tax, $116,000. Subtotal personnel, $160,00, I'm sorry, $160,300. Group health and life insurance, $2,929, I'm sorry, $2,929,700. General insurance. Workman's compensation, $153,000. Police and fire indemnification, $48,000. Unemployment compensation, $215,000. Property and liability insurance, $284,860. Deductible liability, $2,500. Subtotal general insurance, $703,360. Boards, committees, and commissions. Central Mass Regional Planning, $4,232. Airport commission, $200. Conservation... Conservation Commission, $400. Licensing Board, $750. Historical Commission, $750. Zoning Board of Appeals, $750,000. Subtotal, $7,082. Debt service. Principal on debt, $1,626,448. Interest on long-term debt, $1,154,159. Interest on short-term debt, $15,600. Issuance expense, zero. Special services. Revaluation services, $45,000. Ambulance billing services, $30,000. Medicaid billing, $17,000. Preparation for sale of town-owned property, $8,000. GSAB, 45. OPEP study update, $1,800. Subtotal special accounts, $101,800. Miscellaneous state and county, I'm sorry, for a general government total of $12,915,020. Police, $3,388,69. Fire and ambulance, $2,290,723. Inspections, $153,401. Public safety program accounts, $176,000. Total public safety program, $176,000. Public safety total, $6,8193,000. DPW operations and administration, $1,684,950. DPW snow and ice, $200,200. Public Works total, $1,885,150. Human services. Health Department, less the landfill reimbursement fund, $796,28. Veterans and Community Center, $100,852. Library, less library incentive grant, $496,649. Recreation, $25,136. Veterans benefits, $130,000. Veterans memorials, $2,700. EHS program accounts, $132,700, I'm sorry, $132,700. Human services total, $1,551,365. Education. Southbridge Public Schools, $25,123,485. Southern Worcester County Regional Bay Path, $898,510. Southern Worcester County Bay Path debt service, I have a pencil around that, is that $144,146? I'm sorry. Thank you. Okay. $144,146. Bay Path subtotal, $1,042,656, $1,042,656,000. Forty-two thousand.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I've got another circular, I'm sorry, what's that number? $1,042?
$1,042,656.
Six fifty-six. Thank you very much. General fund totals, $47,702, I'm sorry, $47,702,369. Sewer and enterprise fund. Sewer fund budget, $3,209,985. Was it I do wrong?
Yeah.
Go. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Am I all set, Mr. Reed?
Yeah, you don't need to do that. The forty second.
I'm all set then? Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Opening up questions and discussion. First of all, I mean, we all hashed this out. There's many, many hours in subcommittees on all this. So, I mean, I know we did leave a lot on the table in subcommittees. Yes, we did go over line item by line item. Yes, we scrutinized $300 for awards and everything. So I know the general public probably won't be pleased with some of this, but a previous speaker did say, one of the things this community needs is businesses and stuff like that. And we have to, we all love our services, and this all gets hashed out. We all love our services. But we have choices. Either we continue with our services, or we get more business, or we cut services. And then if we cut services, no one's going to like that. So I always say it's very hard for us to accept this budget. It is hard. It's harder for us to say yes, believe it or not, than say no. No is a very easy answer on this. With that being said, any discussion? Counsel Crossco.
Yes, I would like to amend the DPW budget and move $20,000 to the Town Council Reserve account. This is something that I've been asking since the beginning. I know we have an acting director, and I would like to see the license first, before we give her a pay raise. So in that aspect, I would like to put that money that has been scheduled as a pay raise, moved into a Town Council Reserve account. And once that licensing becomes active, then she would be able to be at the pay rate as a licensed DPW director. So I would like to make a motion to move, that's Class 5100 Personnel Services, which would be moved 20,000 to the Town Council Reserve account, pending acquiring the proper licensing.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. I will go with, do you mind if I yield to Counsel? Thank you. Mr. Reed, go ahead, and then I will go. Thank you, Counsel.
Just a question and a comment. Counselor, is that, is the 20,000 meant to be the amount of money for pay raise?
According to, it would be her second step, I believe, which would be the 20, it's actually So keeping her at the 72,879.
Okay, we're looking, that just seems high for the amount of the pay raise, but...
It's just, it's what's on page three of the DPW budget.
And would that, once the certification is in place, would that be retroactive?
I would say retroactive to the date that July 1st, as long as it's...
Because I know this has been a concern of the council, and the acting DPW director and I have even had a conversation about this today. Unfortunately, and I know that she has explained this, and has explained it to me, that I think the major reason that the certification hasn't happened is because of other people. Just delays in references, so on and so forth. And I volunteered to call some of these people, I don't know if that would be a good thing or not, but I'd just like the council to consider that the main reason that this hasn't happened yet is just completely out of her hands. I think she's done everything that she can to make this happen. It's just a matter of some paperwork being filed, and for some time, she's just been waiting on other people.
Through you, Mr. Chair, which I do understand, but it was something that should have only taken six months. That was said to the council previous to my appointment. And any job that you go to, if you don't have the licensing, you don't have the qualifications, you're not qualified. You're disqualified. And, you know, we have allowed this to happen. It's there, which I'm not saying get rid of her. I'm saying, let's take that money, and once the licensing becomes active, moving it right over. Again, it's just holding people accountable. I don't know, I wasn't part of the council when they voted her in. I wasn't, I would have, I would have made a fuss then. If she don't have the licensing, if she's not, I mean, nobody else. You go to a job, and you don't have the qualifications. I know she had it in a different state, I understand that. But we have to hold people accountable. So whatever, you know, I'm just looking at this number, that, you know, she's at, it's Again, I said it during the Subcommittee, this is something that I've been saying since I've got on. It's not against Heather personally, it's not against anybody. It's holding people accountable. We can't just give free money if she's not qualified. Though she is, but in our state, she's not.
That's all I have. Thank you. Counsel Manna first, and Ms. Harnoys.
I'll let Ms. Harnoys go first, and I'll go after her.
Thank you, Counsel.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to point out in the budget that the 20,956 is not the amount of her increase, that actually just shows how much for 5.6 pay periods that she would earn. The actual difference is $1,047.76 when she goes from one step to the other on the schedule. So that's the only amount of the difference.
So if I hear this correctly, it's only a $2,000 pay raise, about that. Which, if I look at this budget, the position that she is qualified for is at 6,500, which is the chief engineer of services.
Okay, is that what you're trying to do? You're taking the difference between the chief engineer pay and the DPW director pay?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just misunderstood.
So, yeah, whatever that number may be, the difference between her current qualifications and the DPW director's pay, that's something that I would like to see. And again, it's moving it over, it's there, it's budgeted, but moving it over, and once that becomes giving her.
Thank you. Counsel Manna, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. I'm just going to touch upon something that Mr. Reed said, he said it before I did. I remember sitting in that Subcommittee meeting, DPW, asking a question about her licensing, and it's the federal government that's holding her up. And, you know, when you're dealing with the federal government, you're dealing with what knows what. So, but I know she is qualified, she is licensed, she's just not licensed in the state of Massachusetts because she's waiting for the federal government. And I believe the council has known this for so long. And we did ask her in the DPW to keep us updated on the process in her minutes that she sends us, and her, the information that we get that letter. So, I mean, if there was an issue with that, that probably should have been brought up at that Subcommittee meeting that night. That's probably, that's why I would have seen it brought up that. That's all I want to say. Thank you.
Counsel Crossco.
Thanks. So the, I think that the public needs to understand what we're talking about, too, the licensing. And I would prefer to have our DPW director up at the podium, if it's possible, if you would allow that, Mr. Chair, to answer questions directly, because we are talking about her, and she's sitting in the audience.
Certainly.
It's my understanding from that meeting that we're talking about her PE license, not that she is any less qualified in all her daily duties that she's doing now. And she is currently filling the position of a DPW director and doing all the duties of a DPW director. I believe that's what we've been told. She is not just the engineer of services now, designing and stamping blueprints or documents. She is actually doing every single component, and probably more than what was being done, than what, as much as what was being done prior, with the exception, as it was explained to us, of being able to sign off on an engineered plan. Therefore, we pay out to do that, which a lot of communities, many communities, that comes the question, do we really need a PE-licensed DPW director? And in some, I guess we've been told we should, we have many areas that that could be useful for us. But I point out, when I called around on snow and ice budget information to at least a dozen communities, I think I found one or two, I believe it was two out of the 12 that had licensed PEs on board with comparable salaries. So maybe you can explain that licensing situation to the general public, so that everybody knows where their tax dollars are going and why, if that's okay with you.
Certainly.
Thanks.
So, as it has been stated, I am a licensed PE in the state of New York, which is where most of my previous experience before moving back to Massachusetts was from. I have started going through the process of getting reciprocity in Massachusetts. Part of Massachusetts program goes through this federal licensing bureau, and then they accept the PE. So it is a very paperwork-heavy, reference-heavy type review process. I am qualified to do the job. I have 20 years of experience in engineering and consulting. I actually will take this and put it to you this way. I have not only been doing the DPW director's job, I have been doing the chief of engineering services job as well, this whole period of time, because I do not have additional support on a day-to-day basis in the office to do that. So it's not only that I'm doing one person's job, I'm actually doing two. Do I have an issue with having my pay withheld? Yes. Do I understand there is a concern? Of course I do. But I actually work very hard, and I hope you'll take that into consideration, that I'm not just doing one person's job, I am doing two. I do get help on occasion, when I need help, bringing into the office, but it's very difficult to not have somebody else there doing what the responsibilities of a chief in engineering services are. And my whole department feels it, not just me.
Thank you, Ms. Blakely. Counsel Crossco.
Through you, Mr. Chair. First, I would like to respond to Ms. Manna's Counselor Minus' point. This was brought up at the Subcommittee meeting, and this is one of the reasons I'm bringing it up again. This is something that I've had an issue since I've gotten on. It's just as simple as being accountable. Sorry, it's not my fault, shame on the past council that hired somebody that did not have the licensing. Sorry. It's not legit. It's not, she's certified, she's doing the job of somebody else, I understand that. But we cannot, we're going through a budget, and we're going to give people pay raises that are not licensed in our state to do business. And I understand she's doing the job of somebody else, but that position, chief engineering position, is an open position. Let's advertise for it. Why hasn't it been, you know, those are the questions that need to be asked and answered. Again, it's as simple as, when she gets her licensing, that money's transferred over. But until then, somebody has to be held accountable. Again, listen, if it's up to me, I'll be knocking on whatever doors, knocking down doors, to get that paper done. And I understand, whatever it is, it's money. But I understand that it's not my fault she's doing two jobs. It's not my fault that this happened. Again, this was said to this, to the past, to the present government, part of the present body that's here, that this would only take less than a year. Before you know it, she'll be in this position for two years, and this process hasn't gone anywhere. That's all I got to say. Again, it's not a personal attack against you, Heather, it's just, you know what, we can constantly say, you know what, that was past practice, that's the way we did it. But if we don't change it now, and move forward now, we keep sweeping things under the rug, and nothing, nothing happens. That's all I got to say. I'm not going to debate this any longer. I've stated what I needed to say. That's, I made my motion. Thank you.
Counsel Moriarty.
Thank you. Just more so for clarification, based on the original motion and then the discussion that followed. And I know I saw Ms. Harnaway kind of doing the same as I was with the calculator, in terms of, so the difference, if I may, through you, what we're talking about really would end up being 8,585, is my math correct? Is that what your understanding was, or, because it was the 72,879 minus the 64,294? From, is how I understood your...
Whatever the pay raise, I mean, you're talking 90,000, 92,000, but she's going to be paying 64.
Excuse me, Counsel, Counsel Moriarty has the floor right now.
So I'm just more or less trying to figure out what the actual amount that we're looking at would be, and just to confirm that we're talking about this being retroactive versus prorated, because that's obviously a big difference as well.
Good.
I'm not really sure what the exact number would be. I would probably say whatever she was making before as a chief of engineering. And I believe it was higher than the 64, because I'm going to say it's closer to like Counsel Crossco had said, maybe the 72, it could be 75. So I would say maybe the 20,000 would be a sufficient number.
So then we would be talking about withholding 20,000, as opposed to eight and change? I'm just, because it seems as if we're not... I'm just, because it seems as if we're not necessarily on the same level in terms of what amount we're talking about. And that's obviously a huge part of that discussion, if we don't know what amounts we're talking.
Councilwoman Clements.
Thank you. You know what? I'm sickened. I'm sickened by this discussion. Yes, we were paying a lot for our previous DPW head, 115,000, I believe, 120,000, quite a bit. And we got our bang for our buck. He built a lot of things, he did the bridges, he did a lot of stuff in-house because he's an engineer. Now we have a woman, excuse me, we have a position that was making 65,000 or whatever it was as the Chief Engineer. And then we have the DPW position at 120, which in my math is somewhere in the 180 range. I'd have to get the books out and be accurate, but I don't think it needs to be accurate to the penny on this. We now have somebody doing the position in the 90,000 range, 85,000, 90,000 range. Somebody please correct me up there with the numbers. And doing two positions, two positions, right now, filling in multiple hours, extra hours, putting in way more than 40 hours a week to fill two positions, because we haven't filled one, we could fire, sure, and fill some, fill these positions at the higher rates that we were paying, but we're getting a bargain until she gets her licensing in Massachusetts. Not that she's not schooled, not that she's not qualified. She cannot sign off on an engineering, large-scale drawings, which many other towns service out when they need it, not on a regular pay basis. So if we were going to go back to our 120 or 115,000 DPW Director with a PE and our Engineering Services and pay the 180, we're saving money right now. We're saving money and we're getting it done, and when we need to expend for those sign-offs, for those stamps, we're doing it. That's the little extra that occasionally we may need. Unless there's a big project in the lineup, we don't need that stamp. But we do need a daily person, we need a person who's going to give it her all and get it done. She's not permanent. We don't know if it's permanent, but for right now, for your budget people out there in Massachusetts, in Southbridge here, that we're looking at our taxes on, this is a bargain. What we're proposed here is that we're going to have to hire somebody else and fill another position for 100 grand. So I suggest, you take your vote, do what you've got to do, but I will not support taking away a person's livelihood who has been doing this job for us without complaint. And maybe if people have taken the tour of the sewer plant that see just how informed she is and just how knowledgeable she is for this community. As a matter of fact, bringing up information to us that we should have been known by our managers 10 years ago, this conversation is ridiculous. And I am embarrassed, as a counselor, to be trying to take away a person's livelihood at the moment. And whether anybody likes it or not is not important. I am, I'm just sickened by this. We are saving the taxpayers' money. Vote appropriately. That's what we keep being told, right? Thank you for your time. Apologize for my outbursts.
Mr. Reed.
Well, just, if I understand it correctly, we're talking about next, the difference between next year's salary, which would be in approximately 93-something, and reducing that by $20,000?
Whatever her position that she is qualified to be at.
She's qualified to make this money.
In the state of Massachusetts. We live in Southbridge, Massachusetts.
So that, but, but, I think we need a number. I'm not sure what the number is. Is it $20,000 you were talking about?
That's what Councilwoman Moriarty was asking.
I have no idea.
Councilon Nicole, go ahead.
Well, no, if it's the difference between the position that she holds now and the, a previous position, I guess, which was what, an engineering position, I think people should be paid what they're, for what they're doing. And she's presently in the DPW position, and I don't want to put gas on this, but I keep hearing about whether she's qualified or not. I've been nothing but impressed with Heather. I mean, she's, we're going to meetings and she's telling the state how a water system operates. And we've all seen her in action about the sewer department and, I mean, there's no question that she's exceptionally qualified. And I'm concerned that if this goes through, we're going to lose an exceptional person.
Councilon Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm one of the counselors that I guess was led down the garden path, but I'd like to say a few things first. Chris Clark came to me as the Chair of the Town Council at the time and talked to me about Heather Blakely. First of all, this is a slippery slope. Counselors are not supposed to be sitting up here talking about department heads by knee. It's a no-no. I wouldn't put up with it, but since it's our, the door's open. And Chris Clark said to me, we're losing the current DPW Director, and I don't want to lose Heather Blakely. She's good. She's better than good. And he didn't impress easily. I know, because I knew Chris Clark very well. Not the guy you saw in the paper or the guy that was sitting over there, but the guy. And he's not impressed by a lot of things, but he was impressed with Heather Blakely. So I kept an eye on that, and it made sense what he had to say. And in municipal government, unless you're doing this, unless you're a member of the council, and I mean really a member of the council, where you go out there and you put on your boots and you walk through the muck and the mud and you see where there is emergency situations and you do all of that stuff, unless you do all of that, and this is, this should be a warning to those who are running for council, it's not, you know, this isn't it. This is just a little bit of it. If you do it right, you're going to be working very hard. So I hope that whoever becomes the new counselors on this council plans on working hard, because that's what you're supposed to do. Doesn't mean it's always done, but that's what you're supposed to do. Heather Blakely is one of the best DPW Directors this community will ever, ever have, and I am really hoping that she does not go the route of Tom Daley, Ken Kalanowski, who are also pretty good, but they weren't as good as she is. And they left. They left for more money and a rosier future. She's willing to stick it out here, and she's very good. And I too went through the wastewater treatment tour last week, which isn't pleasant. It smells, and it's not, you know, if you're dressed up in high heels and a skirt, you're going to be really sorry that you were. And I listened to a person who I can't even imagine having that much expertise in that many subjects. The DPW Director is different than anybody else. We have a great fire chief, we've got a great police chief, the heads of our departments are very good, but a DPW Director wears about 35, 40, 50 hats. She needs, she or he needs to know an awful lot about an awful lot of things, and it's not something that you learn on the job. She's, she is totally capable of being the DPW Director. I admire Councilor Carrasco for his diligence here. His point is well-taken. I believe in accountability, too. But this is not something that I'm going to throw in Heather Blakely's lap. This is the federal government that's holding this up. There's nothing more that she can do, other than pick up the phone every day and harass somebody. And maybe that's what it'll come down to. Maybe Heather and maybe our acting manager are going to have to get more involved in doing that. But I don't even know what the numbers are. None of us up here seem to really know what the numbers are. If in fact it's $20,000, I wouldn't be, you're not going to see me voting on holding back somebody's livelihood. 20, 20 grand is a lot of money. I'm not holding back anybody's money in this one. I'm not going to vote for that. I understand where you're coming from, and I agree with it, but I don't feel that we should be penalizing our DPW Director for something that she can't, she can't make this happen. I'm sure she would like it to have happened months ago, just as much as we would have. All I ask, because I'm not going to vote to hold back any of her salary, all I ask is that you stay on this constantly. I don't, just become a real, you know, become a pain in the neck. Take it from a pain in the neck. Nobody wants to solve the problem more with a pain in the neck than, you know, you get sick of hearing from that person, you're going to push it up the food chain. So just become one. It's not in your nature, make it your nature. But I don't feel that this is the way to go on something like this. If it was Heather that was dragging her feet, it would have been a private conversation she should be having with the acting manager, because he in fact is her boss. We only boss around the manager. We don't get to boss around the department heads. And I understand where Counselor's coming from, but this isn't, I don't think it's, needs to go any further. Thank you.
Councilon McCouchy.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not comfortable discussing personnel in this forum. I completely understand where Councilor Carrasco is coming from. You know, sometimes it's a matter of principle. If I didn't have a license to be in the medical field and I was practicing, there would be a lawsuit. Now, I'm not saying that's going to happen here. I'm just telling you, if you're a teacher and you're not licensed, you can't teach. Heather, I think she's phenomenal. I don't think you're going to find anyone more intelligent, more willing to work for a community. She's, as everyone has stated, she is knowledgeable beyond belief. It's not her. It's the process, and the process is holding Heather up. Now, what Councilor Carrasco is suggesting is not to penalize this person. All he's saying is let the license come forward and we retroactively pay her. I don't, the biggest problem I have is nobody has a figure. Nobody can say it's $5,000 or $7,000, then you hear $20,000. This person is going to get paid irregardless. Once that license is obtained, there's a document, now we can clip it to something. There's something concrete there. I don't want to debate this. I don't even know if this is legal or not on the council floor. I don't know if we could put a hold on this specifically. I don't want to debate personnel. I just think it's in poor taste. And I don't know if this is something we can hold until the final budget approval, and maybe that will come through, Mr. Reed, with you pushing the federal government and, you know, the DPW Director. And I agree with Councilon Nicola, it's just a matter of pure harassment. And maybe as a council, we can send a letter and say, you know, you're, not that they're jeopardizing her position, but they are jeopardizing her livelihood, and I think it's very unfair.
You all set?
Yeah, I just would like your answer.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't know. I guess it could be up to the council, but I don't, I don't, I don't know, because I don't know a number, and we don't know how long it's going to take for the certification to go through. The way things are going, I don't think it's going to happen in the next month.
Well, I think we should try. I think we should do three weeks of trying until the next, until the final budget. I don't want to jeopardize this person's position, but I absolutely understand Councilor Carrasco's point. He's not negatively talking about a department head. It's what we need as a town government and what we expect. Like I said, I think she's a phenomenal person. No one, I don't think anyone on this council is even questioning her character or what she's capable of doing. It's the process, unfortunately, that's holding her hostage, which in turn is holding us hostage, and it's unfair.
Well, I believe you have to pass a budget before the end of the month.
Uh huh. All right, the end of June.
This month.
It's this month?
The 11th month.
Mr. Chair. Are you all set for now?
Yeah, I guess.
Councilwoman Clements.
Thank you. Just a question. Ms. Blakely, are you working illegally here? Could you tell us your qualifications? There's a comment made that we can't be doing anything illegal. Are you working illegally or doing anything illegal here in Massachusetts in this position? I just want to be clear, because again...
The state of Massachusetts, as a DPW Director, does not require me to have my Massachusetts PE. I believe it's your charter that states that it's a Massachusetts PE for this position, and that's the only place that would require it.
Okay, so in our charter, so we have to, obviously, want to abide by our charter?
Right.
Okay, that makes sense. And, all right, so that answers that, would this event, could it have been something that we could have stipended the salary? Could it have been her position plus a stipend for doing the extra work until we found somebody or until whatever the process was? Why couldn't we split that as a stipend per salary amount? Do you know what I'm saying? The position, if she was, if she was hired for the one position and we're having her do both, or she's an interim DPW until she gets qualified, that's such a holdup. She's doing two jobs, as I said. We're getting lots of, lots of bang for our buck with the one salary. But could it have been spread out as a stipend situation? Could it have been allocated as a stipend situation? Engineer, doing all these extra duties, it's a stipend. It's not DPW, as required by charter at this point, until she can legally be. She's not being called the DPW Director, she's calling interim anyway, so shouldn't be an issue to begin with. But I'm just asking, is there a way to do it to make it? She's doing the work for the money she's getting paid for. All right.
Certainly is. Oh, the position is DPW Director, so I'm not following, I mean, get paid according to another position and then get a stipend for the DPW Director responsibilities?
Or is, are we not doing anything against charter because she's an interim at this point? We have not done it officially, correct? So at this point, she's an interim, and she's getting paid DPW salary because she's an interim? And there's nothing illegal or against the charter at that point because she's not been hired permanently? Correct? So we're back to the beginning, where she's still getting paid appropriately for the job she's doing, and it's not against charter, because it's not permanent?
I believe so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Either way, answers the question. Thank you for answering that.
Councilon Vandal.
I'm DPW Director, and I've worked with Heather on many occasions, over the phone, many over the phone, because, you know, I can't get around, you know, down, I did tour the sewer plant, and she was, she was very knowledgeable. I've never had any problems with her. We hired her, we knew she didn't have a certificate, PE, if I'm, am I right? And we knew that it was coming. And, you know, when you're dealing with the state or the federal, things aren't done overnight. So I say just leave things as is, and leave things as is, and when, hopefully, you know, what she needs will come in shortly. And that's all I want to say. I mean, I'll put a plug in. What Kathy said, I agree with everything she said. You know, she's, she's... She's, she's, she's the best we've had. I've dealt with Kalanowski and the other one, and she is, she's the best that I've seen, you know, so far come through. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got to say, being the Chair, it's very hard to let everyone speak, and I did let everyone speak, and Roger, I will recognize you in one minute, but I need...
Thank you very much.
I need to speak. I do need to speak on this. As I said, we spend many, many hours in subcommittees, and yes, this was brought up, and yes, Mr. Reed knows how we feel on this. But man, and I'm telling you straight up, one of the reasons why I'm leaving is this, is absolutely this. I don't mind holding people accountable. I don't. And you know what? Just, just look at our government where it is right now. We have an intern town manager, we're in a crossroads, we have a petition to change our government. So quite frankly, this town's in limbo. It is in limbo, okay? But then I look at our overall budget, okay? The school department, our own school department's 25 million. Bay Path is a million plus. That's 26 million of 47 million, and we're playing around with 20,000, 8,000? Really? And we're, I get the accountability, I do get it. And if we ever move forward and get a town manager, and that's going to be the next sitting council to have to say, okay, this has to happen, but I do believe she is trying her best. She's not just writing it off and saying, I'm not listening to you. It's out of her hands. But as Councilman Clements said, she is doing both positions right now. Quite frankly, I don't agree with everything she does, and we have our little back and forths, but that's our little back and forths that I'll talk to her privately about. But here... But here we are. We don't know the number. I'm not going to support transferring $20,000 because we don't know if $20,000 is the right number or $8,000. So we're going to sit here again, many, many hours that we hashed downstairs over really, quite frankly, it could be $8,000 in the grand scheme of things. And then we have this... Welcome to Southbridge. Welcome to Southbridge because this is how we treat people. I'm tired. I am so tired. And when I say this is one of the reasons, I don't mind holding people accountable, but quite frankly, I get tired also of fighting a lot of fights that shouldn't be happening right now. I try to attend as many subcommittees and get educated. And, you know, as first-year counselors, we should be going to just about all the subcommittees be a sponge. And I don't see that happening straight across the board. When I took office, I was a sponge. I went to every one of them. I'm not going to lie, this year, I didn't go to every one of them because I feel, I picked and choose my battles of saying, you don't need me there, I'm not going to be there. But if you need me there, I will be there. But I've been here long enough to realize what right and wrong is, and this is wrong right now. It's just wrong. I can't wait. And tonight, when I left the house, someone said, oh, what do you think? I'm like, I have no idea. I have no idea what to think. Quite frankly, I'm not going to lie, I hate every other Monday night because you never know what people are going to come up and say instead of them reaching out to you on the side. And I believe Kathy Nicola can realize you just don't know what people are going to say. All of a sudden, here we go. And then here we go. We're looking around going, what should we do now? So I'm not going to support the motion of transferring $20,000 into town council reserves. I respect holding people accountable. I do, I really do. If we ever get a town manager, hopefully, because that's what I believe we need, it's going to be the town manager's responsibility to say, okay, enough is enough and either we move with her or without her. But I know she is a qualified person and she tries hard. And that's all I have to say on that.
Good evening, Roger Coward. Through telegraph. You know, the reason I'm up here is I attend a lot of subcommittee meetings. Mrs. Ackley, I mean, county engineer, she wears many hats. She wears many hats and she performs a lot of work. My suggestion is submit a letter to our state representative in Boston. Maybe put some heat into Washington and do something about it. Maybe expedite this transfer of paperwork so she can be recognized by the state of Massachusetts, have a Massachusetts license. And she's that important for us. Something the council should do as a whole, submit a letter to Boston and put heat on Boston to get this paperwork processed so she can be certified for the state of Massachusetts. It's not because she can't do her work. She's certified by the state of New York. I mean, the question is, if she was unqualified, we've had town managers call themselves town managers, when even town managers and we had them on a job here and make more money than she does. And let's face it, she's doing her job. Paying what has come to her, that's all. Thank you very much. Good night.
Thank you. Counselor Moriarty?
Thank you. Just briefly, I think, and Mr. Coward brought up a point. I think Mr. Reed originally brought up that, you know, the idea of the letter. If the DPW director and/or the town manager think that that would in any way be beneficial or expedite the situation, I'm all for that. Beyond that, as far as the actual motion, the big problem is, obviously, you know, we seem to have dwindled it down that the motion is the 20 and that it would be retroactive rather than prorated. But what we don't, we still just don't know is if that 20 is an accurate figure in terms of accurately reflecting. So without any sufficient, you know, we have insufficient information. So, you know, I just, I can't vote one way or the other at the moment. And I know that that probably sounds like a cop-out to an extent, but without the sufficient information to actually make an informed decision, I'm going to err on the side of caution. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Counselor Markucci?
Mister Chair, that's through you. That's exactly why I asked if this is something... Do we have to do this tonight? Maybe Karen and Mr. Reed can come up with a figure? I mean, is it that important to do this tonight? Or can it be something that's done at our next council meeting? I don't... I don't know. I don't, at the next budget meeting, I just don't want to rush this or...
The next meeting isn't until June 9th.
Counselor Nicola?
I think that, thank you. I just think that, you know, playing Solomon here, I think you leave everything as it is. And we have the manager's office compose a letter and the council sign that letter and get that out. I don't know if it's going to help, but it isn't going to hurt. And as I said earlier, just keep on this. You're just going to have to keep on this. There is no other way. You can't go into, you know, you can't force the feds to do anything except tax you. That's about the only thing that, you know, that they're good for. And you can quote me on that. I don't think, as Counselor Moriarty said, there's not enough information. And even if there was enough information, I don't think this particular motion would go through anyway. I think the council has pretty much spoken and nobody's, you know, there are a few people who are in favor of doing that, but for the most part, it's not going to pass. It doesn't matter if it's $20,000 or $20,000. It's not going to pass. I think that it should stay as it is. Get this budget going and be more proactive in getting that license taken care of. And I'm not saying that Heather hasn't done anything, but she's a very busy lady. I'm sure it's not the first thing she does every morning. Maybe she's going to need to. But I think we need to pass this budget, pass it as it stands, and move forward. And, you know, as the acting town manager and maybe keep something available so that whoever takes your place knows that this is a priority. We need to get this woman her license and move forward. And I'm really, again, uncomfortable. This is not proper procedure to be discussing a department head like this. I think we need to move forward. So if you're going to, somebody's going to vote on this motion?
We already have a motion in a second on the $20,000 town council reserve. I think we had way too much discussion on this and we need to vote on the motion right now. With that being said, roll call.
Counselor Moriarty?
Present.
Counselor Nicola?
No.
Counselor Vandal?
No.
Counselor Carrasco?
Yes.
Counselor Clemmons?
No.
Counselor Landevan?
No.
Counselor Manna?
No.
Counselor Markucci?
No.
I have one yes, six no, one present.
Motion does not pass. In the spirit of moving on, is there any other councils that have questions and concern on our budget? Counselor Moriarty?
Thank you. I hope this one goes a lot quicker and easier. We had at the EHS subcommittee meeting, we went over the general budget. I'm trying to pull up the right page now. My one item that I wanted to pull out of there came about from the Health Department, and I kind of raised my question and concern there. And our health director more or less affirmed my belief at the time. And I had suggested at the time that we strike a certain amount. And he indicated he'd be fine with that, but that subcommittee took no action. And as not a member of that committee, I wasn't able to make a motion. And that would be, I'm going to try and do that now. So in the Health Department budget, class 5200, so page three, towards the bottom, second to last item, was lab auditing and testing and monitoring coverage. The requested amount was originally $10,204, but the recommended amount was $12,416, a difference of, again, not much money, but just $2,212, which kind of conveniently happened to be a difference between a salary line item. And my recollection, and the health director can confirm or disagree if he so chooses, but was that he felt comfortable that the original requested amount of $10,204 was sufficient and would not be in any way detrimental or leave the town lacking in any way. And again, I know it's a very small amount, but I just prefer not to leave any penny on the table that shouldn't be. So I'll make that in the form of a motion to amend the actual appropriation from $12,416 to the original requested amount of $10,204. And as far as the actual line item number, that was 001.0512.5307.
Second. We have a motion, a second discussion. Counselor Manna?
Thank you. Commissioner Pelletier, please clarify on this. I'm a little confused. Thank you.
Mister Pelletier?
Good evening.
How are you?
I'm good. Just on Counselor Moriarty's point. Do you have it?
I have not particularly. It's been a while since I've been... The monies for the...
Mister Pelletier, just, Miss Pelletier, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Would you like Karen to answer?
If she's capable?
You know?
I think I can help you.
If a lot of it's her budget, that, you know, she goes to everything, so go ahead.
Part of the instructions were to provide a level service or a level funded budget. And that's what the Health Department came in. They came in level funded at $796,028. And when they originally figured their salaries, so up in the class 5100 on the first page, there was a difference of, I believe it's $2,200 that when we recalculated the salaries, they were a little high. So what ended up happening is for him to have a level funded budget, for him to fund it at the 309, which he thought that it was, he reduced that 5200 line item so it came in bottom line. But actually, he just made a small mistake in the salaries. So when we reduced it by the 2,200, then he could bring that line item back up and still maintain his bottom line. So if he does reduce it by the 2,200, he's actually reducing his bottom line budget. So that's what happened.
This was actually brought up in the subcommittee meeting. Mister Moriarty did bring it up. And I told him at the time that I did not produce a budget that I couldn't work with. So when that was put back in the other direction, he asked me specifically, you put this number in there, can you work with that? What that is, that line item is used to double-check work that Casella does to make sure that we have a comfort level that the well testing is accurate. I can live with the adjusted number. By living with the adjusted number, I'm going to do less backup tests. I'm going to be running probably quarterly tests on one or two wells rather than a larger spectrum. So yes, I can work with the reduced number in the lab testing audit.
Counselor Nicole?
I'm not comfortable with that. I mean, we're all about looking over Casella's shoulder and making sure everything is safe and sound in any way physically possible. And for $2,200, I'm not taking any tests away. No. I can't live with that.
Counselor Clemmons?
Easy question. Does Board of Health, I know we hear departments give back money. You know, we do our budget, and a budget is an estimate. Obviously, things can come over and things can come under. So has Board of Health ever turned back money that we are aware of? I mean, do they, can they turn back money? Do they turn back money ever? You know, should we stay with this and your testing is less? Obviously, it is more, you'll have to ask for more money.
The reality is, we have given back money. We've given back money from that line item. And the reason we've given back money, and I won't speak poorly or pro for a previous manager, but a lot of the testing wasn't being done. I want to do the testing as often as Casella does the testing. We'll be taking a sample of the actual test they take and sending it to an independent lab. And then Ty and Bond will be analyzing their data against ours. But we've turned back money in that particular line item because the testing wasn't getting done. I feel that the town should have independent testing on it.
I can agree with Counselor Nicola that for a couple thousand to be left as is without switching everything around seems prudent on our part in terms of oversight. Thank you.
Mister Reed?
Counsel, just to answer your question about turnbacks, I know that Karen Harno and I discussed this in looking at what different departments had turned back, and some of them have turned back substantial money. But I think when we went over the budget and we looked at the different budgets, that wasn't something that we considered. And I know that the superintendent used a good term in one of his budget discussions about 11th hour spending. And it's always been my feeling that if you look at that and what departments turned back at the end of the year and they get penalized for that, and that's your guideline, that you end up, that's kind of self-defeating, that it promotes that 11th hour spending. So I think that what we tried to do is really produce realistic budgets. If there was money left over at the end of the year, so be it. It goes back to free cash. And that's what we tried to promote rather than encourage, you know, the wrong kind of behavior. So yes, there probably was money turned back. I know some other departments, particularly public safety departments, turned back quite a bit of money, but we didn't look at it as a guideline as far as reducing budgets.
Right. No, I understand that concept, too. Thank you very much.
I fully expect that this year I will be turning back. Understand, I only started in November. I've made adjustments to make the program my program, but I still probably didn't really get rolling in adjusting the budgets to what I need until halfway through the year anyhow. So I envision I will be turning back money this year.
It's not a request, you don't just say...
Well, the reality is, those who sat through my subcommittee meeting, I significantly moved monies around within this budget to make it work for me and the team that I'm trying to put together. So next year, we'll probably be closer to the belt on it. But this year, we're still reorganizing. So there will be monies turned back this year.
Counselor Moriarty?
Thank you. You know, my only frustration in this is just that this explanation in terms of the testing to this extent is new tonight versus that subcommittee meeting, to my recollection. And it sufficiently answers my question. And as I said on one of the last items, you know, especially with something like Public Health and the landfill, I prefer to err on the side of caution. So with that, based on the actual information and, you know, having seen Mister Pelletier's work thus far and feeling comfortable enough to take him at his word, I'm going to withdraw my motion. Thank you.
And whose second is it?
Thank you.
Motion is withdrew? Any other discussion? Counselor Moriarty?
Thank you. And this is the one that I'm sure has nothing to do with you, though. This is one that I'm sure will become a sticky wicket. It's one I was opposed to last year and have voiced my opposition to again this year. And that is, I would like to cut the amount budgeted for the patrol cars for the police department from $70,000 to $35,000, dropping that to one vehicle rather than two, once again, every year after having purchased at least three last year and so forth. So my motion is to reduce the police department's budget for patrol cars under the capital outlay, which is class 5800, line item 001.0210.5820, and cut that from $70,000 to $35,000.
Second? Discussion on that? Mister Reed?
I believe, I believe, the chief will correct me if I'm wrong, that that had already been cut down to three. I know that doesn't address the council's concerns. I would just say that in my experience, for a department as large as the Southbridge Department, two cruisers, to me, is minimal. I think the department has a good program for the replacement and turnover of vehicles. I know at the meetings, the chief has explained the mileage on the different vehicles. And of course, that doesn't indicate the total wear because they're always running. It's more like hours rather than miles. But I think that two, again, for the size of this department and the number of cruisers that they have, I think is already low.
Anyone else discussion on that? We have a motion and a second on it? Roll call to reduce... Roll call to reduce the patrol car item budget down to, what was your number again, counsel?
It was at, the recommended final stage was at $70,000, and my motion was to reduce to $35,000, cutting it in half.
Reduce it down to $35,000. Is everyone aware of the motion? With that being said, roll call, please.
Counsel Nicola?
No.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Crossco?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
No.
Counsel Landman?
No.
Counsel Manna?
No.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Four yes, four no?
Motion doesn't pass. With that being said, is there any other questions on our budget? Any other questions? Seeing none. So we have a total general fund budget of $47,702,369. Could I have a roll call, please, on that?
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Crossco?
No.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Landman?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Seven yes, one no?
Motion passes. Agenda item number 13, vote that the amount of $3,299,850 is appropriated for the FY 2015 Sewer Enterprise Fund budget to be raised from sewer usage charges and other department revenues.
Sum moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Counsel Clemens.
I would just encourage people to, I know this is a topic for concern and speculation. There will be some more, my understanding from DPW Director at this point, that there will be some more public opportunity to go and to see what's going on at the sewer treatment plant. And I highly encourage you to make that time. They were nice enough to open it up in the evening for us. I'm hoping that they'll do that again and potentially do a Saturday to allow for public to come and see what's going on there and to really understand why some of the fees are going the direction they are. By no, you know, it's by no one's fault, really, it's, it's work that unfortunately it's time to be done. So also, Counsel Manna had taken a lot of pictures, she's probably going to mention that, of, of a lot of the equipment there, a lot of the, the buildings and such, and has posted them, and she'll probably say that. So I won't say anymore on that. Just, it's, it's nothing pleasant, but it's something that is pretty, it's there. It's a, there's some crucial time. And so I encourage you all to hopefully be a little bit understanding on that. And I thank Will Canoyer for putting together that document you did with the averages, the average increases and such for the public. If that's not online, maybe get it, let the people, the average homeowner know what those increases look like for the average bill, which were not as detrimental. I don't know if you want to say it? Do you want to say it now?
Yeah, I will. Counsel, I'll do it. I'll do it.
Right, that's right. That's right, I forgot about that. So pay, pay attention to that, tune in. It's important information. Thank you.
I'll say counsel.
Yes, thank you.
Counsel Manin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. Yes, I did take lots of pictures. There's a lot of deterioration down at our sewer plant, and there's some unfunded mandates that have come down also. And I urge you to take the tour, get in touch with Mrs. Blakely. She's very knowledgeable of the sewer plant. You have about a half hour before you even go in, and she's talking to you about all these different pieces, and there's like a map on the wall, and it shows you each piece of the sewer treatment plant. I, I do have more pictures to post, I didn't get them all posted. But it's on my old website, it's not on my current one. It's voteformoniquetowncouncilorsomethinglikethat.com, because I wanted to keep them separate from my personal one. So I can also, if you want to get in touch with me, I can email them to you, mmana@southbridgemass.org. But I encourage you to get in touch with Mrs. Blakely and, and take a tour and see for yourself the eye openers down there. And it is a shame that, over the years, that this wasn't brought to our attention sooner, or money wasn't somehow saved or something. It, it just wasn't done correctly, it seems like. There's too much deterioration down there. Why it's taken so long, I, I can't imagine, but it is, it is an eye opener, and I encourage you to take the tour. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Moriarty.
Through you, to whomever, we do, and Mr. Canoyer just referenced it, we have a public hearing set up for Thursday, the 22nd, at 6:00 PM here in council chambers on the water and sewer. And it just, you know, the part that troubles me is just that we have sewer now and water as the next agenda item to vote on before we have that hearing, which to me seems just cart before the horse. And I'm just kind of, I guess, I guess for lack of a better term, looking either for an explanation, or if this is something that, similar to the budget, we need to do before the end of this current month, or if this is something that can be done after the hearing, even if one person attends the hearing, at least we're, we're providing that opportunity.
All I can say, counselor, is that I agree. In fact, cart before the horse, I think, is a term I used earlier today. All I know is, I shouldn't say that, but I, I do know that last year it was done this way. I believe the hearing was after the council vote.
Would there be any reason we can't have this done in June? The votes?
Well, I know you have to do the operating budget, the budget, by the end of the month. I don't know about water and sewer rates. Yeah, have to do water and sewer also tonight.
Okay. So, so in that regard, and this part may come out as if I'm doing both sides, but then for these next two items, I'll be voting no, just based on procedure, that I don't feel is being done the proper way. That said, otherwise, if the hearing had already taken place, I'd be in full support for both of these, even though it does result in a significant increase. And, and I kind of, I, I went off a little bit at a, a subcommittee meeting where we talked about this, where, you know, it was pointed out by the DPW Director and, and other officials, how the town administration has known about this issue at the sewer plant for some time, and, and more or less kind of ignored it and kicked the can down the road, whether that was with or without council knowledge or not, prior to, you know, 18, 24 months ago, I can't speak for, but it seemed to me, and I said it the other night, and I'll say it again, is, it seemed to me that the biggest problem we had with the sewer stuff and the water, for years, those rates were kept stagnant and low without any sort of increase whatsoever, for the sole purpose of, of political expediency to kind of more or less look good and, and propagate that. And, you know, we certainly had, at this time last year, the, the PowerPoint presentation that showed current administration's 0% or, or nearly 0% increases, and then past administration having significantly higher water and sewer rate increases. And say what you wish for the last manager, the manager before that, and the manager before that. You know, certainly nothing to do with any of them as individuals, but that, that I thought was a problem, that it's, it's nice to be able to keep rates and taxes low, that, you know, everybody wants that. But if we're doing that at the expense of things that need to be done, that becomes a problem. And as we saw, I, I wasn't able to make it to the, to the tour based on the timing of it, but the photographic evidence and everything else that was provided, the neglect that had gone on, to no fault of the people working there, more so just the resources provided or not provided to them, was, was ridiculous. Nothing short of, of a crime. You know, I guess that's a little hyperbolic, but, yeah, so I, I just, just kind of wanted to say that I know the rates are going up significantly this year, they're going to go up significantly the year after, and, and for a few years going forward, more or less because this has been kicked down the road a handful of times. However, again, just based on, on principle, in terms of the way this has been set up, in terms of putting together an action before the public has their chance at, at the hearing, for that reason, I'll be casting a no vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Nicole.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I, I'm a little bit stymied by the idea that, you know, the water rates, how the water rates, how the sewer rates have gone, and I'll tell you why. I've been on this town council now for nine consecutive years, and there's always been a project at the wastewater treatment facility. We've had engineers, we've had all kinds of people working down there, doing, doing this, that, and the other thing. And everything they do is exceptionally costly, exceptionally costly. There's always been somebody working on something down there, engineers, architects, fixing this, changing this. I went on the tour last week, and there's a lot of stuff that needs to be replaced and repaired and fixed, but I have a sneaking suspicion that that will always be, that, 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 just by the nature of the beast. I'm sorry, solid waste corrodes, it damages, it causes problems. Those buildings are damaged because of solid waste. And there's not been any, I don't think there's been a time where everybody was turning their back and saying, we're not going to do anything with this. I just think there's only so much money to go around, and there's always a project going on at the wastewater treatment facility. Now, you have even more mandates coming that need to be funded by us, because as we know, most everything that's mandated is funded by us. So while I can appreciate some of what Counsel Moriarty is saying, I can't say that it's my truth or the reality that I've lived in all these years, there's always been a project going on down there, and there always will be. The fact that, that rates have been, have been lighter some years than others is wonderful, but ever since I've lived in the town of Southbridge, every year, my water rates have gone up. So, and my, you know, the whole, the tax, the bill has always gone up in increments, but it's always gone up. This one's going to really hurt. And for anybody out there who, who thinks that, you know, we're being, being light on this particular subject, we're not. When you open the bill, you'll see. And, I mean, it's, it's not because the town wants to make money off of you, it's because we have to take care of this stuff. It's mandated, and you want us to. Believe me, you do want us to. I have my own suggestions in how some of that can be fixed, but we won't be discussing that this evening here. But I just wanted to say that it's, it's, it's ongoing at the wastewater treatment facility. It's never going to stop, so.
Thank you, counsel. Mr. Reed.
To answer the council's question about the, the timing, you could revisit this at your meeting in June. I don't believe, and Will and I talked about this today, and Will, correct me if I'm wrong, I think you would be able to do this at your first meeting in June, to revisit this after the hearing, to give you some flexibility, and there would still be time to set the rates and get the bills out.
Counsel Moriarty.
Then I will make a motion to postpone Agenda Items 13 and 14 to the next council meeting pursuant to allowing the public hearing to take place first.
Second. I have a motion and a second to postpone Agenda Item Number 13 and 14 until after the public hearing. Any discussion on this? Karen?
Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Reed, but I think what you were trying to explain is what you would do is you would vote this budget this evening, and then you would revisit it if, once the rates are set, if there are any changes.
So we could reduce after the fact. Right, right. To give you the flexibility, but I think you need to vote something tonight, the same as with the operating budget.
Okay. Then I withdraw that motion.
Thank you. Any other discussion? With that being said, again, in the spirit of trying to move things on, Counsel Moriarty, point taken. Me and Counsel Markucci just brought this up Thursday in the manager's office, why aren't we voting on something before the hearing? And again, I would really advise you, because the answer we got, well, we did it last year and stuff like that, I would really, you guys are going to be the current people sitting. It needs to be changed, so the hearing is before the vote. And you can make that right, definitely make that right. So that was definitely hashed out, and quite frankly, this is one of the ones that it is very hard to say yes, but yes, needs to happen. Yes, does need to happen. We're in a sewer business, we have a sewer treatment plant, we're not in a septic business. If people wanted to have their own septic, that's their choice. That's one of the things that makes Southbridge really unique. We have a water treatment plant that costs a lot of money with a lot of old pipes, and we have a sewer treatment plant that is raw sewage that is highly corrosive. And it's hard to say yes, but it's the right thing to do, so I will be supporting that. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Counsel Crossco?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Landman?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 14, vote the amount of $3,145,690 is appropriated for the FY 2015 Water Enterprise Fund budget to be raised from water usage charges and other department revenues. Have a motion?
Sum moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing on roll call, please.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Counsel Landman?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Crossco?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 15, vote to appropriate $375,000 from the landfill royalty receipts reserve account number 6790 in the FY 2015 contribu-, eh, can't speak, sorry, to retirement account. Have a motion?
Sum moved.
Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing on roll call, please.
Counsel Landman?
Yes.
Counsel Manna?
Yes.
Counsel Markucci?
Yes.
Counsel Moriarty?
Yes.
Counsel Nicola?
Yes.
Counsel Vandal?
Yes.
Counsel Crossco?
Yes.
Counsel Clemens?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 16, vote that the sum of $125,000 shall be appropriated from the landfill royalty receipt reserve account number 6790 as the first payment into the OPEB trust fund for FY 2015.
Sum moved. Second.
Any discussion on this? Counsel Moriarty.
Just through you to the manager or whomever is the most appropriate, just for, for the public, could you explain what this is?
This is part of the finance plan where money that comes in from the landfill, which would go into the royalty receipts reserve account, are transferred out to meet these OPEB, which are post-employment benefit liabilities that now towns have. So it's a, it's a way, same as money's been previously was transferred to the contributory retirement account, to help fund these, these liabilities and to use, you know, which is finite money from the landfill to, to fund these obligations. And hopefully, the day will come when the town is, is fully paid and be one of the few communities that doesn't have these any longer. I think, I think it's, it's quite a good plan that the administration had put together on this.
And that was kind of my, the point I was going to bring up. A year or so ago, we were, I don't even want to say in the hole, because we still are really, but we were just woefully in the hole, and that this is, this is going to make it, make us much more solvent in that area. I just kind of wanted to explain that, because I know people oftentimes, when they hear about the landfill royalty receipts, are very concerned as to where that goes, but these are, these are funds that we have to pay out eventually anyways, and this is just kind of doing that due diligence to make sure those funds are actually there when those bills come due. So I just wanted to kind of make sure that was out there.
Yeah, regardless of, you know, and I think municipal officials all have their own feelings about both the retirement liability and particularly OPEB, but they are real liabilities that are, that are put on communities, and it's, like I said, it's a good plan to eventually, to eventually meet those responsibilities.
Second. Any other questions? Roll call, please. Roll call, please.
Councilor Manna?
Yes.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Councilor Moriarty?
Yes.
Councilor Nicola?
Yes.
Councilor Vandal?
Yes.
Councilor Crossco?
Yes.
Councilor Clemens?
Yes.
Councilor Landervan?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Uh, Councilor Markucci.
Oh, Councilor Markucci? Yes. Eight yes?
Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 17, vote to reauthorize the lease property revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for all town-owned lease properties except 115 Marcy Street from lease payments to, to be deposited in the account with all expenditures, expenditures, to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Councilor Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 18, vote to reauthorize the daycare center lease properties revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for all town-owned lease properties except 115 Marcy Street from the lease payments to be deposited in the account with all the expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year.
Some move. Second.
Okay, I'm gonna, how we have to amend this, there's definitely a typo that was just brought to my...
Yeah, so, Mr. Reed, can you just, so we can clean it all up, please? In the third, in the third line, except where it says, "Town lease property except 115 Marcy Street," it would be town lease property at 115 Marcy Street.
Okay.
Motion to amend?
Do I have a second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on the amendment? Council Crossco?
Do we keep all town-owned property, or is it, are we changing that whole line for at 115?
For town-owned property at 115 Marcy Street? That's what I was under the impression.
Because this, the daycare is 115, correct?
Right.
Okay.
Yes. Okay, I do have a motion for the amendment in a second. Any discussion on the amendment? Roll call on the amendment, please.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
The amendment passes, so going back to the original motion now for Agenda Item 18, everyone's aware of it, the third line will read expenses and utilities for all town-owned lease properties at 115 Marcy Street. That's a change. Any discussion on that? Roll call, please.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Thank you, motion passes. Agenda Item Number 19, vote to reauthorize the Southbridge Airport lease properties revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for the lease property at the Southbridge Municipal Airport from lease payments to be deposited in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $100,000 per year.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Uh, Council Markucci.
Oh, Council Markucci? Yes. Eight yes?
Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 17, vote to reauthorize the lease property revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E half, to pay repairs, improvements, expenses, and utilities for all town-owned lease properties except 115 Marcy Street from lease payments to be deposited in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $30,000 per year. Do I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 21, vote to reauthorize the Southbridge Middle High School store revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E half, to pay expenses associated with the school store from receipts to be deposited into account with all expenditures to be approved by the school superintendent and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $30,000 per year.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 23, vote to reauthorize the Southbridge Middle High School store revolving fund under the provisions of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53E half, to pay expenses associated with the administration in collections of fines in violation of Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 148A and Chapter 115 of the Acts of 2009. Such fines to be deposited in the account with all expenditures to be approved by the town manager and total expenditures from the account not to exceed $5,000.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Seven yes?
Uh, Council Markucci.
Oh, Council Markucci? Yes. Eight yes?
Motion passes. Thank you. Agenda Item Number 24, vote to transfer $420,191.53 from the landfill royalty receipts reserve account to fund the final FYI 2014 snow and ice expenditures. Stabilization fund, $392,806.71 in free cash of $27,384.82. This will require a two-third roll call vote. I have a motion?
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Council Crossco?
I just want to just reflect that this is an additional, according to what we've already budgeted, correct?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah. Council Clemens?
Thank you. This is just, I just wanted to point out, not that it probably needs it, but this is just, this is again, one of those areas where we're very volatile, you know, things go up and down, and I know we're working with DPW in trying to come up with better plans, but the ultimate fact, factor that plays into this is the weather. And when you have bad winters, as we seem to be having more and more of, the numbers just grow, and it's, in many ways, it's out of our control. Every time you call, you call the police, they're mandated to call DPW, and they got to send somebody out. Might just be one person, might be two people, but it, you still have to send people out and pay them. So be mindful of that in the future. If you don't have to be out on the road and then complaining it's slippery, stay home, you know, save us some money, stay in a little bit, maybe it buys us a little more time and lowers our budget in the next winter, just a request, but think about it before you pick up the phone and request services, because that's what makes the money go up, and then we have to find a place to get that money from, and probably the taxes. Thanks.
Karen, any questions?
Just to further clarify, of this amount that's coming from stabilization, $392,000, $200,000 had already been set aside in the FY 14 budget, so it's actually an additional $192,000 that's coming out of the stabilization.
Any questions on that? Council Crossco?
We, we increased that prior, it was original 200, 200, $200,200, then we voted again another 200, 200, correct?
We did not. We put the $200,000 in stabilization, so this is to take out that $200,000 and an additional $192,000. We never officially did the vote, we just did a vote to allow to over-expand.
Okay. So, but according to the sheet that we got in our packet, it's a difference of $420,191.53, according to what we appropriated, correct?
Correct.
That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Nicole?
I'd just like to say, for anybody out there that's still listening, you might want to hear this number. Total snow and ice expenses and obligations this year, $620,391.53. So, you know, just keep that in mind, somewhat with Councilor Clemens said, and that's what it, it costs to run a government in the town of Southbridge. Our winters are bad, probably going to spend at least this next year too, so keep that in mind when you're scratching your head looking at your tax bills. This is what we've, we are up against up here, not to make our, you know, not to justify anything other than to say, "That's what it is." There's no getting around that. Thank you.
Certainly. Any other questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Agenda Item Number 25, vote to transfer $3,500 from Town Council Reserve Account Number 1.132.5781 to Veterans Benefit Account Number 1.945.5771.0.59 to pay benefits for the month of June.
Some move. Second.
Any discussion on this? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Council Moriarty?
Yes.
Council Nicola?
Yes.
Council Vandal?
Yes.
Council Crossco?
Yes.
Council Clemens?
Yes.
Council Landervan?
Yes.
Council Manna?
Yes.
Council Markucci?
Yes.
Eight yes?
Motion passes. Okay, oh boy. 26 councils forum.
I'll give everybody a dollar if you don't say one word. Because we've got a lot of tired department heads out here.
Mr. Reed said he'll, he'll double that.
Council Crossco?
I'm sorry, but I can't do it. I have to really recognize the Southbridge Elementary Arts Initiative. On Friday, I was able to go to the Time to Shine Talent Show at the old high school, school, where the Southbridge Elementary kids really put on a great display of talent in many different forms, from dances to comedy to, you name it, songs, they did a great job. And I just, I, again, our, our young generation has a lot of talents, and I just wanted to, honestly, I, I had to say, it was a great, great time that I had with my family, and hopefully it continues, and we continue to display the talent that our young kids have in this town, because we do have some great kids with a lot of talent. That's all I have for tonight.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Moriarty?
Thank you. Just quickly, I, I know we, especially when we're in the car, we tend to be distracted, or, or kind of driving with blinders on and playing with the radio, or illegally playing with phones, or whatever, but coming up Main Street last week, as I was coming up, you know, by the bank section, I started to notice that the flags had been put out on the street lamps and such, and, and at one point got stopped at the, at the light, the corner, Main and Hamilton, and, and it was just a really, a nice view, it was a nice day, really nice view looking up Main Street towards Notre Dame Church, and just wanted to kind of thank and recognize those who, who have spent the time to take care of that, and also just wanted to kind of put in a quick plug for the Southbridge Fest, which is coming up on Saturday, May thirty-first, from ten to four, back down, downtown again, and the parade is over, starts at eleven, running from the old high school, down Marcy, down Main, down to the Common, and the parade's at eleven, and I believe they're stepping off, well, they're stepping off at eleven, but they're looking for people to show up at quarter after ten, ten-thirty, for those who are going to be in the parade. So if you have a, a social group, church group, civic group, whatever, by all means, it doesn't cost anything, get into that parade, and it's good exposure for your group, and that's all I have. I should get a dollar just for that.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Nicole?
Okay, I have to give the dollar back, because I do want to say thank you to all of the department heads, to Karen Harnoy, Mindy Ernst Funnier, Acting Town Manager Robert Reed, for your really diligent work on this budget. I know it wasn't easy, it was painful, I'm sure, but you did a great job, as always. Thank you very much, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Vandal?
I'd like the, I'd like the town manager to give us a brief, uh, report on the buildings that were, that we were selling. You know, are they sold, do we have deposits, or?
Counsel, thanks for bringing that up. I, um, believe, we had received bids on all of them, meaning Seventy Foster, Eighty and one fifteen Marcy Street, and I believe they went to the evaluation committee last week, and I believe the evaluation committee's recommendation was favorable, so now I think it's, it's moving forward with the final documents and, and going forward with the sale. I think we have the, basically the same arrangement with Eighty, Marcy Street, but I think on the other two properties, we'll, we'll be looking, you know, with Eighty, I think it will be a purchase and sale agreement and move forward with that agreement, but on the other two properties, it will be, you know, moving forward with the, with the actual sale.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, that's all I have.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Manah?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, through you. One thing I, I wanted to ask when we were on the sewer item, and I forgot, that was supposed to be a video down there. Did you do a walkthrough on that yet, Mrs. Blakely?
Yeah, I did. Yep. Cable's got it. Been working on it. Um, yeah, the video has been done, and it's with, we've done a video and a voiceover, and some information's been provided to Cable, and they're pulling all that information together, so please look for the video of the sewer plant out on the website, on the town cable, and you'll be able to view it there if you can't come down to the plant. And I will, it was brought up earlier, I will be looking to set up another date, probably, it'll probably be in June at this point, with Memorial Day coming up.
Thank you, Mrs. Blakely. Also, I did receive a phone call last week in regards to the notices that went out for the demand for the taxes. He was upset that the tax demand notice was sent out eight days after being late, and I can understand that we get our tax bills well in advance, and most of us should be able to plan and whatnot for these taxes, but sometimes circumstances come up, and they can't pay on time. So I guess my question is, the ten-dollar demand, is there any way, if somebody's like in a pinch, like if they're on a fixed budget and they're really in a pinch, can they call the office and ask to be put on some type of payment plan, not have that ten-dollar demand? I told him I would bring this up, so that's what I'm doing. Oh, uh-huh. We're gonna get them all up here.
They are.
The, the Mass General Law allows me to waive a certain amount on a bill, only, only up to fifteen dollars on a bill. What we typically do, if somebody comes in, we look at past history. If they, if they have good payment history, we will do a courtesy one-time waive.
Okay, well, that's good to know, and thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mindy. And also, he also has some concerns about some potholes on South Street, and I know we had Mr. Goethe up here earlier speaking about the road conditions, and they are in poor condition. His main concern about the potholes on South Street was, there was a young child riding a bike, and his fear was the child was going to hit the pothole and fall on the street and get injured. So that, that was one of his concerns, and I thought I'd bring that up also. And, you know, get ahold of your state rep, get ahold of the state senator, the governor's holding up a hundred million dollars for the state and Chapter Ninety money from the previous fiscal year. There's money left over in, in the local aid, the lottery money for local aid and school. Get ahold of Senator Moore and Representative Durant, and ask them where this money is, and that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Clemens?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, too, had wanted to thank the department heads for all being here, not just you, there are some that are still sitting out there, trying to stay awake, and I appreciate that you're all here in case we had questions. Obviously, we had plenty of them, and I don't think we've asked this many in the five years I've been here, but I appreciate your being here for us. A couple of things coming up. Cops and Kids, you all know the program pretty much, right? It's the summer youth program and a few events during the year, too, but mostly it takes place about six weeks during the summer year, and the, the ongoing need for funds for this program, it's an ongoing need. Every year, we provide, not we, excuse me, the police and the, their workers provide six weeks or so of wonderful summer camp, Monday through Friday, they provide food for the kids, they give them swim lessons, they take swim lessons, and they have all kinds of field trips. It's a great thing. But the Cops and Kids is having a fundraiser, and it is being sponsored by the Public House, you've probably heard of some of this, it's the Cops and Kids, along, it's the Public House Cook for the Community, and we are the recipient of one of their dates. It will be June second, coming up Monday, June second. There are two seedings, four-thirty to six-fifteen, and six-thirty to seven-thirty. It's going to be a classic barbecue with all the great stuff, pulled pork, baked beans, baked chicken, cornbread, watermelon salad, rolls, coffee tea, all that good stuff. It will be held outdoors, under their tent, at the Public House in Sturbridge. It's an all-you-can-eat event, adults are thirteen dollars and children are five dollars, four to twelve-year-olds are five dollars. So that's a very reasonable price to take your family out to dinner if you can and support the cause, because a portion of the proceeds will go to the Cops and Kids program, and if you would like tickets, you can get them at the door, you can just pay when you go there if you're not quite sure of your plans, but if you want to commit to it, then pre-purchase your ticket at the police station, or you can visit the copsandkids.com website, of course speak with Sergeant Jose Dinghy, or pretty much any of us can turn you in the right direction to get some tickets. So we certainly hope to, to see many of you there and make this a successful event for Cops and Kids. Down the road, they will also be, have a table at the Fest, May thirty-first, as Counsel Moriarty pointed out, is coming up, it's gonna be a wonderful Saturday. Downtown on Main Street this time, so a lot of good stuff, but the Cops and Kids will be there with a table. They will have sign-ups for the program, for parents who've been asking that question, they usually have their signup sheets, and you can get your application in early, you can come down, just say hi, you can purchase a, make a donation and get a chance for one of the basket raffles that they have, and support the cause that way also. So now, tonight, we heard about Aero Ventures and great things happening right here locally that, yes, we are still a viable, vibrant community that people want to be part of. So many times, we hear the negative, but I love to point out the positive and acknowledge that we have issues that still need to be fixed. And having said that, so we've got that happening at the airport, and what's really great, if you haven't read the paper, you didn't get the paper, I had the privilege on, on Monday, May twelfth, to go to INCOM in Charlton and listen to the wonderful news from Governor Patrick about the Innovation Technology Assistance Center, that they're going to be partnering up, it's a two-million-dollar grant that they bestowed here on the Quinn Sigeman Community College, right here in Southbridge, on the campus, down at the conference center. There'll be a big expansion, and this will provide training for people in, in other technology areas, manufacturing and such. There's a lot of need for this, and I think it's wonderful that this investment, once